We welcome you all to the November 9th Troy City Council Meeting. And it is my pleasure to ask Father Ron Joswiak to come forward to give us the invocation. That will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Father Ron, please rise.
We gather together so that the Lord might bless us. Heavenly Father, God of heaven and all the earth, we are grateful to you for allowing us to come together and work for the good of our city of Troy. We call upon your great name to help us give our individual and collective gifts in service to the people under our care. We humbly ask your blessings on the members of this council as they work together in order to bring stability and prosperity to our families and our people. As this council begins its work, we ask for the gift of wisdom and understanding to act with integrity, to meet all challenges boldly. We ask for fortitude to work for the common good and determination to complete the tasks good governing demands. As matters are deliberated, may this body of representatives maintain focus amidst the distractions with kindness and respect. May the work undertaken tonight and the decisions may prove to be insightful and help build a responsible and productive society for the days ahead and the generations to come. Almighty God, calling upon your great name, we now place ourselves in your service. We ask that you sustain us, support us, and help us to do what is right and just. May we never abuse the power given us nor ignore the poor among us. May the efforts begun in this political process continue under your guidance and with your grace. And may the blessings of peace come to us and to all who work for the good of our community in this great city of Troy. We ask this through Christ our Lord. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Father Ron.
Thank you.
Have a good evening. This evening, we begin with our special installation ceremony of the, and the 2009 to 2011 City Council convenes. We're going to have the installation of new members at this time, which will be done by our city clerk, Tony Bartholomew. And Bartholomew, will you begin with Maureen McGinnis, please?
I desolately swear that I support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Michigan, the Charter of the City of Troy, and that I will faithfully perform the duties of the office of City Council member in and for the City of Troy, County of Oakland, State of Michigan, according to the best of my abilities. So help me God.
I do. Thank you.
And I should tell you that after we install all three of our council members tonight, then we'll have introduction of family members by the council members. So now, Councilman Dave Slater, next.
I desolately swear that I support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Michigan, the Charter of the City of Troy, and that I will faithfully perform the duties of the office of City Council member in and for the City of Troy, County of Oakland, State of Michigan, according to the best of my abilities. So help me God.
I do.
Councilman Wade Fleming?
I desolately swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Michigan, the Charter of the City of Troy, and that I will faithfully perform the duties of the office of City Council member in and for the City of Troy, County of Oakland, State of Michigan, according to the best of my abilities. So help me God.
I will.
We welcome our new council members and returning council members and ask them at this time if they'd like to introduce family members that are here to witness their installation. So we'll start with Councilwoman McGinnis.
I'm honored to be sitting here tonight, and I just would briefly like to introduce my family members and friends that are here tonight to support me. My father, Don McGinnis, my mother, Burl Braddock, my stepfather, Mark Braddock, my boyfriend, Kevin Klein Steiver, one of my oldest and dearest friends, Kimberly Halbison, many of my supporters and friends from the Troy Leadership Coalition that are here as well. I appreciate all of your help and support through the campaign, and I am honored to serve you in this capacity. Thank you.
Councilman Slater, would you like to introduce family members?
Yes. Also, I am honored to be here facing south instead of north in this council chambers. This is just a tremendous honor for me. I have with me my wife of almost 35 years, Judy, who has been by my side through this campaign. I can't thank her enough. Judy? And seated next to Judy is my youngest daughter, Katie, who got married right in the middle of my campaign. Katie? Along with Maureen, I certainly would like to thank everyone that helped me. I know I have done that individually, but the Troy Leadership Coalition that is here tonight, thank you so much. Two good friends that are here today, my buddy Ed, thank you. My buddy Joe, thank you. And to you that are standing against the wall, thank you so much also.
Yes, I'd like to introduce my wife, who's in the back there with the policeman, Paula. Thirty-five years. And I'd also congratulate her on her reelection as well to the school board, Paula. And my son, Mark, there. Mark, thank you for your support and encouragement. And to all those that are here who supported me and those who didn't, that's fine. The election's behind us. Let's move on. Okay? I would like to also say that there were some negative things that came out of the election. I'm very disappointed in that. I don't, that's not my style. I did not support that, did not pay for that, did not condone that, did not know that was happening. But having said that, it occurred, that should not occur on either side. We have a lot of work to do, and I'm excited about the next four years and look forward to working with this team. And we will come together as a team to move this city forward and do the right things. Okay? So thank you again for all your support and look forward to serving you another four years. Thank you.
At our first meeting of the year, we always have a few housekeeping duties to perform. And the next is the adoption of rules of procedure, which can be adopted as is or amended. And so that is before us here this evening. Someone wish to move a resolution? Oh, I beg your pardon. Yes?
Mayor Schilling?
Here.
Councilmember Beltramini?
Here.
Fleming?
Here.
Kerwin?
Yes.
Here. Howrlech?
Here.
McGinnis?
Here.
Slater?
Here.
Quorum present. My ear. An adoption of the rules of procedure?
Mayor?
Is that Councilman Howard?
Yes.
Yes.
I'll move the resolution resolved that the Troy City Council hereby adopts the rules of procedure of the City Council of the City of Troy as recorded by the city clerk in the minutes of this meeting. Support.
Moved by Councilman Howard, seconded by Councilman Fleming, that we adopt the rules of procedure as recorded by the city clerk in the minutes of this meeting. Discussion? Yes, Councilman Kerwin?
Madam Mayor, I had, there are some suggested changes laid on the table. Might we talk about those now?
Yes, we may. And then if someone wishes to amend, they may do that also. By a substitute resolution, correct? Yes. Councilman Kerwin?
You should have before you something that says, Councilmember Kerwin on it, a yellow Obviously, at Tuesday's election, we, the charter was amended with some specific language addressing the selection of mayor pro temp. Our language is not the same. It really should be the same. People voted on that language, and we should adopt it as written in the charter. So I would suggest that change. Do you need that through? As my understanding of these rules is we simply make a collection of suggestions and then consensus is reached.
You can do that, or you can make them as you go at your free will.
Well, shall I just go ahead and move this then?
It would have to be an amendment. Is that correct, Mrs. Bartholomew?
That is correct. It probably would be advisable to then vote on each amendment as they occur rather than letting them stack on each other.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Then I would move that the language in Rule 1 be changed to match the language that was passed by charter. And I think that it's included in your yellow stat.
Would you like to read that language?
Certainly. The mayor pro temp shall be elected by the council from among its members annually in November. I move that.
Actually, the charter language said the council shall at its first meeting in, am I, am I correct, Mrs. Bartholomew? The council shall at its first meeting in November annually elect one of its members to serve as mayor pro temp. He or she shall serve for a term expiring upon the election of his or her successor. That was the actual charter language now. Is that what you wish to have?
I'm comfortable with that.
Do we have a second for that amendment?
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Kerwin, seconded by Councilman Fleming, that we approve the amendment to Rule 1 in our rules of procedure. Councilwoman Beltramini?
I am much more comfortable with the simple sentence offered by the clerk in both of these versions. I think it's much clearer than the actual charter language, and it does reflect the process in the charter. So I, if, if your intent is to put the charter language in, I, I can't support that.
The shorter language does reflect what is in there. In action for the rules of procedure, we don't have to have the charter language.
Okay. So I just need to know which one you're proposing?
Well, Councilwoman Kerwin, it's her amendment. Yes, Councilwoman Kerwin?
Well, I'd be happy to.
Do the one sentence?
I'll go with the one sentence. I agree. So.
I would support that.
Okay.
Further discussion?
Mayor?
Yes, Councilman Howard?
I guess the uncertainty that I have is that the existing language doesn't appear to conflict with the charter unless I'm mistaken. The, the language in here addresses the, and correct me if I'm wrong, but the, the language here addresses the, the order of rotation of the mayor pro temp. And I know that back in the eighties and nineties, there was a tremendous amount of time that was in consternation among members of council back and forth about who should be the mayor pro temp. And I know this linear thing that we've been using since then, which is over, over 10 years old, has, has made it a fairly routine procedure and has cut down on the amount of internal kind of posturing, if you will. And especially now that we're going to the annual basis, it allows pretty much everybody the opportunity to be the mayor pro temp, which I think is a fair way to do it.
I do think that the selection of the mayor pro temp will be rather routine in our usually way that we've done it. It was just a change in the vote that occurred.
Sure.
And, but I, I think that the, the whole idea, in fact, when the charter was set up in 1955, was so that it would be a rotating position, so that everyone would have an equal opportunity to do it. And so I think that that, that will occur.
Mayor?
I think we will. Yes. Did you wish to, Councilman Howard?
Well, I just wanted, because the current language says the selection of mayor pro temp shall proceed in a linear fashion based on seat rotation in the following order. And then it lists the members of council. And we're proposing to replace that with the mayor pro temp shall be elected by the council from among its members annually in November. And I don't, I don't really understand the, the need for this. I mean, it's, it's a policy change is what it is. And I don't necessarily think it's housekeeping, but I'm, I'm just trying to understand where we're coming from on this.
Further discussion? Councilwoman Beltramini?
Speaking to Councilman Harrell's point, I, I do, while, Madam Mayor, you say it will be routine, as everyone at this table is term limited, the institutional memory of that fades. And so the compromise might be to have the first sentence read, "The mayor pro temp shall be elected by council from among its members annually in November." The selection shall proceed in a linear fashion based on seat rotation, which then codifies established practice in the second sentence as opposed to the first.
Further discussion? Mrs. Bartholomew? Could we have the vote then on the amendment?
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilmember Beltramini?
No.
Fleming?
Yes.
Howrlech?
No.
Kerwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes. Yes.
Motion passes. Does anyone else have a change, an amendment? I see that there's some on the yellow sheet with the red here. Yes, excuse me, Mrs. Bartholomew, yes?
That particular amendment is to substitute into the full document. As a point of clarification, at this point in time, you're going to offer many of them and then one vote on the final documents. Is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Someone else have another item? Councilwoman Kerwin?
Do, regarding public comment, I propose moving it forward on the agenda and offering one all-inclusive opportunity for anyone who wishes to address council. And this will necessitate changes in the agenda, Rule 16, and several other references when you have them before you.
You're moving the amendment?
I am.
Do we have a second?
I would second that.
Moved by Councilwoman Kerwin, seconded by Councilwoman McGinnis, that we amend the order of business and, the, excuse me, the public comment section, and that would also change order of business, correct?
Questions for clarification, please?
Questions, yes. Councilwoman Beltramini?
Item H on page three would then read regular business. Council will move forward all of the E items as requested by members of the audience. The, the public will have already spoken, so I, I guess that my question is why, why take them out of order?
Mrs. Bartholomew?
In drafting that, I took the philosophy that there would still be members in the audience present that may wish to hear the discussion on item seven and therefore may request that seven be moved up in front of one through six, just because they're present in the audience. But that's how that got there.
Further discussion or questions on that? The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Councilmember Beltramini?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Howrlech?
No.
Kerwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes. Motion passes. Are there any other changes to the rules of procedure? I see that number 12 is indicated here. Do you need an amendment on that, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Please.
Would someone like to move that amendment? It's on page four.
Madam Mayor?
Councilwoman Beltramini?
I, I quite honestly don't know who put this in here, but past practices taught us that it would be a handy tool. So I would move the ability to withdraw motions, the new rule 12, as in the draft. Support?
Moved by Councilwoman Beltramini, seconded by Councilwoman Kerwin.
Madam Mayor?
That, that we amend item, which would be the new, would be the new 12 in the order of business. Councilwoman Kerwin, discussion?
I agree with Councilmember Beltramini. It's something that we tend to use, even though it's not in our rules and procedure we wanted to. It is a good tool. So even though it doesn't fit with parliamentary practice, I think that it is something that we've, we've been using it. So.
Further discussion on number 12? Mrs. Bartholomew, the vote?
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Howrlech?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilmember Beltramini?
Yes.
Motion passes. Are there any other amendments for the council rules of procedure to come before us? Councilwoman Kerwin?
I've also asked, and it is before you, some sample codes of conduct. I know for years on this council, through Councilmember David Lambert, and we've even spoken in terms of Councilmember Beltramini, talking about codes of conduct or establishing standards of practice. So I put before just some samples. I greatly appreciate Councilmember Beltramini bringing us each back the Epic Handbook for Michigan Municipalities. This is the first time anyone has seen these, just samples or ideas, and I don't expect them to be adopted tonight. But, Madam Mayor, I would ask that in, that we schedule a future study session where we can spend time looking at.
To address?
Yeah, to address this and any other changes in rules and procedures, because I know for the newest council members, it was a quick turnaround to look at the rules and procedures and perhaps you have other ideas that haven't yet.
I need to alert everyone on using their mics, because some of the microphones in this sound system work very well and others do not. And so you have to kind of just get right up by your mic so the members of the audience can really hear. So I cautioning everyone about that. Are there any other amendments? Yes, Mrs. Bartholomew?
I would also like to point out in the rules of business that I took the liberty of moving the invocation and the pledge of allegiance prior to the call of order.
Right.
I just wanted to bring to your attention.
And actually, I think that's what we've been doing. I've just been welcoming people. Okay, any others?
Mayor?
Councilman Howard?
Yes, I just wanted to make the suggestion that since these are fairly significant changes, and for the next couple of meetings, members of the public might not be aware of these changes, and perhaps if you wouldn't mind making an announcement at the beginning of the meeting to advise people that if they want to speak, they're going to have that one opportunity to do so.
Yes. I, I think that's an excellent suggestion. I had planned on doing that. I also think it would be good for the next few meetings to have that be maybe at the front of the agenda so that folks would be aware, you know, like right after the cover page, to alert everyone. Okay, now, Mrs. Bartholomew, we need to vote on all of it together. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Mayor?
Councilman Howard?
Just one final comment. And the, the issue of public comment on the council agenda is one that I feel very strongly about, and therefore with that amendment in place, I cannot support these rules of procedure. I do believe that my historical memory goes back to 1992, and members of the public since 1992 have had the opportunity to speak on individual items as they were happening at the council table. And it has served us well in those 17 years. I'm not in favor of having a bulk period during the beginning of the meeting, which is detached from the actual discussion. I think it has the potential to create problems, and I think it's, it's a solution that's begging a problem. But I just want to explain my upcoming vote.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Mrs. Bartholomew, the vote?
Councilmember Howrlech?
No.
Kerwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilmember Beltramini?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next, we come to appointment of mayor pro temp. And the mayor pro temp is chosen from among the members each year annually now, and that resolution is before us.
Madam Mayor?
Councilwoman Beltramini?
I would resolve that Troy City Council hereby appoints Wade Fleming to serve as mayor pro temp for the city council of the City of Troy.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Moved by Councilwoman Beltramini, seconded by Councilwoman McGinnis, that we, the Troy City Council hereby appoints Wade Fleming to serve as mayor pro temp for the city council of the City of Troy this year. Discussion on the motion? Councilwoman Kerwin?
We've been, you know, I've had an opportunity to see Mayor Pro Temp Howrlech and actually Councilmember Beltramini chair meetings very effectively because they're so comfortable with parliamentary procedure. During the times of some absences, Mayor, Mayor Pro Temp Howrlech has recognized the significance of parliamentary procedure in honoring the minority voice and the majority voice. And I think that he handled that really well. And I think in part that comes through training. So it's really a question for Councilmember Fleming. I would hope that and ask that training happen. And so, Mayor, perhaps you could ascertain whether Councilmember Fleming would be willing to take some training through MML. I know that they also have parliamentary information.
They, they have. They have classes on a regular basis, I'm sure you're already aware, and usually when people do a position that's different or in addition to what they've been doing, if they have time in their schedule, they go for those training classes. Would you be interested in that, Councilwoman Fleming?
I would be interested and willing to commit to do that. I would like to get a schedule, but we'll do that. Thank you.
Thank you, and I do want to applaud the skill that I have seen both from Councilmember Beltrame for these past two years, as MML President and President-elect, and also from the council member now, our Mayor Pro Tem, Martin Howarla, who really chaired meetings beautifully.
Any other discussion on the motion? The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Councilmember Kirwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
No.
Councilmember Beltrame?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Howarla?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next, we go to our Certificates of Recognition, and our first is a library update, so it's not really a certificate of recognition. Yes.
Ah, sorry.
I'm sorry, Mrs. Bartholomew? Oh, I'm sorry. You'll forgive me. We're going to have the swearing in of Mayor Pro Tem Fleming, and you want to do it here or down there? What is your choice? We moved the flag over, see, just so we have it for pictures and everything, so.
I solemnly swear that I support the Constitution of the United States, the Charter of the City of Troy, the Constitution of the State of Michigan, and that I will faithfully, proactively do these at the office of Mayor Pro Tem and in for the City of Troy, county of Oakland, state of Michigan, and to the rest of my abilities.
I will.
And now we'll have our library update. It's really not, it comes under this section, because this is a section where we usually talk about the different departments at different times, but it's not really a certificate of recognition. Then we'll have the one we are going to present.
Well, good evening, everyone. I appreciate the opportunity to present the library's annual report to you. I was leaping out of my seat with anticipation, because those of you who know me know that the Troy Public Library is one of my absolutely favorite things to talk about, and for those of you who don't know me, just a brief word of background, I've been the Director of Troy Library for about two and a half years now, and prior to that, I was the Director of the Chelsea District Library, but the Troy Library is where I got my first library job. And I grew up in Troy, went to Troy schools, and it has a very special place in my heart, because I've been a dedicated user of it for the last 30 years. So it's a great thrill for me to present, to be the Director, and also to present to you the annual report, so. Here we go. It was a very busy year at the Troy Public Library. We had several major projects. One of the biggest was the implementation of the radio frequency identification program, and if you're wondering what is that, it's very similar to the way items are tagged in a grocery store, so if you tried to take something out of the grocery store without paying for it, the gate's beep. Those of you who figured out our old security system, the book cart, the book jacket with the little blue card that went in, that was a security system, so that's, that is no longer. This is a much more effective system for security and also inventory. An added benefit is it is a much speedier system for checking out and returning library materials, and if I can use a visual example, instead of opening a book, scanning a barcode, putting a little blue card in, closing the book, putting the book over here, all we have to do now is wave it over a pad, and that's it. So things are moving along much more quickly at the Troy Public Library. Another bonus is, no longer do I have to have staff dedicate thousands of hours of time stamping those blue cards. You don't have to pay for the blue cards anymore either, so staff can now put their time to much better use. I need to mention the volunteers who worked on this project. Over 1,800 hours of time, volunteer time, was dedicated by 129 volunteers to tag the over 300,000 items in the Troy Library's collection. They did it in four months. We, along with some other libraries in the Suburban Library Cooperative, started, kind of pioneered this project, and some of those libraries are still working. We got our collection done in four months, and that was due down to those volunteers, so yay, volunteers. The next project is the implementation of the Polaris Library System. It's a new library catalog, a very powerful system, and we implemented that, we went live with it on September 30. It's been in the works since January of 2009, and we pursued a really aggressive timeline to get going with this, because we wanted to maximize our savings in this fiscal year, and we also wanted to avoid as much as possible paying for two systems simultaneously. So the system is up, it's running, we've been live for about six weeks. Most of the major bugs have been worked out, and I think, I think people will see the benefits as, I think they're seeing them now, but I think they'll see them even more as time goes on, and we can implement more of the features. We also reopened the Cup and Chaucer Cafe on June 1, and I know many of you were there at the dedication, and we redesigned our website. It's now www.troylibrary.info. We've been planning it since August of 2008. We went live on September 29 of 2009, and major thanks to the Community Affairs Department and the city's IT Department for their help with this project. If you have a chance to check it out, I invite you to do so. Lots of new features, and it's very interactive. Programs. Programs play a big, big, big part in the life of the Troy Public Library. We put on 1,138 programs this year, and almost 28,000 people attended them, so that's, that's a record year for us. Very good. You can, you can read the numbers yourself, I won't go through that, but one area that I do want to draw your attention to are the computer classes for adults. We offer 14 classes per month for beginning to advanced computer users. They tend to be overview classes, they're not multi-week classes, but we've tried to expand our offerings. We offer all the Microsoft Office offerings, but also things like blogging for beginners, how to, introduction to eBay, how to download pictures from your digital camera onto your own computer, and as a result, our class attendance is up 68% to over 1,350 students. This is an area that's really, really growing, and it's great. Of course, the summer reading program, no report about the library would be complete without a summer reading program report. We had another great summer. We really enjoy seeing all the kids come to the library, but we also appreciate seeing all their parents come to the library, too. We also sponsored a new program this year for City of Troy employees, and that attracted 46 people, so we're hoping to get more of the employees reading next year, and I cannot end this segment without giving a special thanks to the Friends of the Troy Library, who sponsor all of the programs and all of the prizes for those programs. Grants, awards, and achievements. I'm thrilled that it was, it was a good year for grants, awards, and achievements at the Troy Library. As you've heard about, the Troy Library was, received the Information Literacy for the Jobseeker, well, we won an award for this program from the American Library Association and World Book. The $5,000 award is going to cover the costs for our Information Literacy for the Jobseeker program, which in a nutshell, basically would show library users, show users how to use all of the library resources, print, electronic, everything you can think of to find jobs, and I'm very excited about this. I was at the Michigan Library Association Annual Conference last week, and many, many other libraries have started similar programs, so I'm very happy about that, because it means we'll get people working, help people find jobs. The first program is slated to start in January of 2010, and I will let you know how that goes. Our technology librarian, John Robertson, won the Walter H. Kaiser Award, which is awarded by the Michigan Library Association, and this award is given to someone who pioneers an innovation or does something creative to improve library service. This was awarded to him last week, and we're very, very, very proud of him. Last but not least, I've mentioned the conference a couple times, because it's on my mind. I was the Chair of the Michigan Library Association Conference, and it was a great honor to be asked. I was thrilled to do it, and I'm thrilled it's over. Partnerships. We are always looking for ways that we can partner with community organizations or individuals such as our volunteers to make the library a better place, and show people how the library can improve their lives. One organization that we have forged a strong partnership with is the Troy Museum and Historic Village. We've been working together with Lorraine Campbell and her staff to cross-promote programming, joint, offer joint programs whenever possible, and really do what we can to not compete with each other in terms of programming. We're trying not to offer the same programs on the same day, so the people of Troy can go to a lot of programs on a lot of different days. That's working out very well. The Friends of the Troy Library. I've said it once, I've, I need to say it a million times. I can't say it enough. The Friends of the Troy Public Library are the best friends anybody could have. They fund all of the library's programs, they fund the Special Needs Collection. They are absolutely tremendous, and just to let you know, we're working on creating a Special Needs Collection for adults, which we hope to unveil in 2010, and that's by patron request and a natural offshoot of the Special Needs Collection for children that we've had for two years now. Last but not least, our volunteers. In addition to the RFID volunteers, 321 volunteers contributed almost 15,000 hours. That's an average of 45 hours per volunteer, so imagine 321 people working a full week at the Troy Public Library. That's wonderful, and I think that that really speaks to how many people really love and care about and are interested in the library. TPL by the numbers. Everybody always likes to see the numbers. I like to see the numbers. Total circulation, 1,532,610. Library usage is going up across the country, and this represents about 20,000, or 20,000 increase over last year. Last year was about 1,510,000. So I think that, you know, we're doing gangbusters business over there. Total number of cardholders, 50,062. Now, that was at the end of June, and I'm sure that that number has increased since then. We usually do about 200 a month or so. Number of holds placed, I'm going to bring up the next number, because I think that these two kind of go hand in hand. The total number of items in the collection is almost 320,000. The total number of holds placed is 160,000. So if you do the math, think of it this way, if you've been to the Troy Library recently, imagine a hold placed on every other book in the, every other item in the collection. That is a lot of holds. People like to place holds. Total number of patron visits, 655,266. That's, that's just wonderful, absolutely wonderful. It's a very busy and well-used library. Total number of website visits. Now, again, I'll point this out to you, because I think this is a number to watch. 628,927. That is almost equal to the number of patron visits, and I think what that speaks to is that many, many, many people are using the library remotely. What we try to do on our website is offer a lot of library services and collections electronically, downloadable audio, downloadable video. We do, we do chat reference when the library's open, but many, many, many of the library resources are available 24/7, and I think people are making themselves, are availing themselves of these resources. So I think that that number will continue to grow, and I can tell you that we're looking for more and more ways to make our services and collections available online. Last but not least, the total number of computer users, 108,941. That's a lot of computer sessions. This is a screenshot of what we call the Value Calculator. It's available on our website, and it's a neat little gadget, which, especially if you're a heavy library user, you can see how much you save every month by using the Troy Public Library. And I apologize that the screenshot is a little bit blurry, but if you, if you want to go on our website and take a look at it, what you can do is, let's say you come to the Troy Library once a month, and each month you check out four books, and two DVDs, and two music CDs, and a museum pass, and you ask two reference questions. That's the case in this example. By doing all of that, you save yourself $184, which is what you would have to pay if you did all of these things on your own, if you went to the bookstore and bought four books, and bought two music CDs, and two DVDs, and so on. So if you are a heavy library user or an occasional library user, I do invite you to take a look at that, because it was the number that I came up with was quite astonishing, and I was very pleased that I'm saving so much by using my library. Goals for 2009, 2010. It's good to have goals. We are constantly evaluating our services and programs and collections, and making changes, because I feel very strongly that the Troy community deserves the very, 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 very best in library service, and it is my goal and the goal of the staff to provide that. So we're always looking at how can we do things better. We take suggestions and questions from patrons and implement most of them whenever possible. I feel very strongly that we need to do that, so I hope people continue to make suggestions and let their opinions be known. We continue to think critically regarding creating usable space. Space is occasionally an issue for us, but we're working on ways of making that better, and I'm pleased that we've made some improvements in that area as well. We are always evaluating our staffing levels as positions become open, and we're doing a lot of cross-training, so we're reassigning responsibilities as needed to try to maximize our staff resources as well. And last but not least, we're using our, we're going to be using the Polaris system to its fullest potential, has a lot of features, a lot of bells and whistles, and we want to use it to its fullest potential, so the public derives the maximum benefit. So, the Troy Library is one of the busiest places in town. It's open seven days a week for 65 hours a week, and I always tell people in the Citizens Academy, please, 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 make use of us. Librarians become librarians for a reason, because we love our jobs, and we're, the adult services and youth services librarians are like detectives. So if you have a question about, you know, the gross national product of Australia, or what's the weather like in Timbuktu, or you're planning a trip and need to know a good hotel, call us. We're happy to help. Call us, come in, text us, email us, email me, call me, whatever you need, but we are here to help you, so please, please, please make use of us. I always maintain that the library is the one institution in society that offers something for everybody, and I think you'll find that at the Troy Public Library. So, thank you very much for the opportunity, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. And for those that want to read the report, it was part of the section of this agenda, so for folks that want to read all that, they can, too.
And we're also going to make it available on our website as well. I wanted to present it to you first.
Right, thank you. Councilwoman Kirwin, you had a question or comment?
A big library fan. One thing, Ms. Bartholomew, that you didn't mention is that, in fact, you were a friend of the Troy Public Library before you were many of the other things that you were, and so I know you have that. The library is, is a wonderful place to see everyone from a babe in arms all the way up to the other end of the spectrum, people with my hair, and there's something there for everyone. Isn't that true?
I believe that with all my heart.
You know, the schools, I see that we have a school board member in the room. There was a time when the media centers played such an important role in our school districts, and they've had to change because of the times. Children after school really have no access to those media centers now, yet I see them flock, both after school, in the evenings, and on days when the school district closes for that day. Your place is just bustling with young people. I wonder, just briefly, if you could address the role that our library plays in terms of literacy?
Sure. Well, we offer many storytimes for, beginning with baby storytime, baby storytime lapsit, all the way up through fourth and fifth graders, and then I think you can see that library participation continues even through our teen programs. We have some wonderfully talented teen librarians who are doing things like poetry slams and video gaming tournaments, and there's a writing contest going on this month. It's National Novel Writing Month, and so we, we don't want to just lose kids after fifth grade or middle school or even high school. We want to do things to keep them coming back. I think in terms of literacy, literacy is not just for the young. Our computer classes offer adults a way to become computer literate. Our Jobseeker program is offering a way for people who maybe aren't familiar with the mechanics of the computer, how to use a mouse, how to save things to a disk, how to, you know, form and make an attachment, how to create an email account, become computer literate. So I think the library offers literacy opportunities for people of all ages in whatever they may need to become more literate about.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Bartholomew. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
And next, we do have a proclamation, and it goes to Pam Brady in recognition of American Recycles 2009, so while Pam's coming forward, I'll come down and meet her at the front. So while Pam's coming forward, I'll come down and meet her at the front. Has it been another year already since we did this?
We recycle tons.
Yes, I know, we have been. This is just always so important for all the residents and the businesses to know about the recycling that we do here in Troy, but all, all over America. So, here goes. Whereas the world has changed a lot in the past century, from individually packaged food servings to disposable diapers, more garbage is generated now than ever before. The average American discards 7.5 pounds of garbage every day. Our garbage, our solid waste stream, all goes to landfills where it is compacted and buried. And whereas to focus the nation's attention on the importance of recycling, businesses, industries, government agencies, nonprofit organizations, and individuals have joined together to celebrate America Recycles 2009, and are encouraging their employees, staff, customers, memberships, and all citizens to pledge to buy more recycled content products starting today. And whereas participating in America Recycles 2009 is one way our citizens can help raise awareness about the need to reduce waste by reusing, recycling, and buying recycled products. And whereas the more we recycle, the less garbage winds up in our landfills and incineration plants. By reusing aluminum, paper, glass, plastics, and other materials, we can save production and energy costs and reduce by up to 75% the negative impacts that the extraction and processing of virgin materials has on the environment. Plastics made from precious and non-renewable petroleum and aluminum, which is mined from bauxite, are especially important to recycle. And whereas recycling helps protect our resources, our environment, and our quality of life. The entire loop, reduce, reuse, recycle, is completed when we buy products made from recycled material. And whereas from July 2008 to June 2007, the city of Troy recycled 4,375 tons of glass, paperboard, cardboard, newspaper, metal, tin, and plastic, and 10,547 tons of compost. And whereas state and community leaders need to spread the word about the excellent programs they have established, the growth of markets for recyclable materials, and the importance of buying recycled products. Now therefore be resolved that the city of Troy, Troy City Council hereby proclaims America Recycles 2009 in Troy, Michigan, and urges all Troy residents to reduce, reuse, and recycle. Be further resolved that America Recycles 2009 is celebrated year-round to encourage people to recycle and buy products made from recycled materials. The theme of America Recycles in 2009 is, "It All Comes Back to You." Now, this is presented to you this ninth of November, but as Pam can see, and maybe you too, it isn't signed yet, or we don't have the seal, because we, we wanted to give you the one that had all the new signatures too. So tonight I'm doing it, but you're going to get a copy, the actual proclamation that's all signed.
I'll come into City Hall and get the signature.
Yes, you'll come in. Yes, you will come in. Okay. So, thank you. And would you like to say a few words? Yes, please do, Pam.
I'd like to say welcome to all the new city council members. I hope, and give you my best wishes and congratulations, and hope that the next four years are very good and profitable on board for all of us.
Thank you.
As city council goes, so goes the rest of the city. So it behooves all of us the better we do.
Thank you.
I am Pam Brady. I'm a master recycler and a volunteer member of the Socra Recycling Committee. If you note, the proclamation does not have my name out of anywhere, because all I'm doing is accepting this proclamation on behalf of all the residents in Troy who recycle. And so for all of you, I'm accepting it, but it's all of you that it's for. I invite everyone to visit the recycling website, and that is www.socra.org. And Socra is S-O-C-R-R-A dot org. Click on a multitude of information pieces, from video to ecology suggestions, to what you can recycle, to how to handle hazardous waste, to any number of things. They're all on that website, and it's very easy to navigate them. Also, I'd like to say you can sign up for Recycling 101 class. They're held in various locations throughout the fall, and I'm one of the team teachers. I'll be happy to personally escort you through the class if there are any questions that you have. We have a great team who teaches it, and I don't think that you will leave with any questions unanswered. If you do, we will find out the answer and get back to you. Also, for America Recycles Day, the Socra Recycling Center is having a set of tours the entire week of November 16th. You can call 248-288-5150 and sign up for a tour to make sure that we have enough tour guides for you. It lasts about 45 minutes, and it's well worth your while. Look for me, I'll be there also. If you need specific information or help from the city, Vicki Richardson is our Troy Recycling Coordinator. She works out of the DPW office and does a myriad of things. Recycling is just one of them. And her phone number is 248-524-3399. Not that I need a caller, I just know it by heart. One thing to remember is that Troy is going through a green initiative. So we have everything from the Alloterra House on Civic Center property to recycle bins that are now in the Troy Community Center, to one of the things that they did not give Daphne Russ credit for, and that is their recycle bins in the Troy Library as well. And there are even places where you can dispose of old reading glasses, and they will be properly passed on to people who can use them. So the city is doing it. It's our chance to be able to help ourselves with their help. The thing that I want to remember is that every item that goes into the garbage costs its money. Everything that goes into the recycle bin gives money back to us. And so every item that goes into the recycle bin gives money back to the city. I think John Lomorato would like a little extra money. I think John Zerlag would like the pressure to be taken off. So every bit that we can take out of the trash bin and put into the recycle bin is going to lighten their load, and if their load is lightened, so is ours, because we are, we are the city. The city is not them, it's us. It's all of us together, doing our work together. The simple thing is that trash costs us, recycling pays us. Environmentally, it's way more important than that, because we need to conserve as many resources as possible for ourselves and for future generations. Let's not waste a single good thing. Let's reduce, reuse, recycle everything we can. It's an alternative that we can all live with. And I'm wearing this shirt tonight. Everybody's a little bit better dressed than I am, but I'm wearing this shirt to say, even though the weather is beautiful out, it still is fall. These leaves make up a very nice part of, half of the material that goes into the compost and becomes that beautiful humus that we can use as gardeners. And so this is just a quick reminder that while the day is pretty, it's still fall. Thank you.
And our first item is the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG funds for 2010 application. And Tim Mishnick will present for staff.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Each year we bring to you the application for a community development block grant. This year, the, the funding has increased just slightly, approximately $9,000. More significant, though, is an item that reduces the amount that we can use from 45% to 30% for home chore. What home chore is the ability for us to go out and help the senior citizens with removal of snow and taking care of their lawn, leaves in the fall, mowing during the summertime. That reduction moves from $71,000 a year to $50,000 a year. We currently have about 75 people on the program. That's pretty consistent. We will be able to service those people. Hopefully, we won't have the winters that we've had the last two, because that may pressure us even more with these fundings. But on a year-to-year basis, with the levity of the number of people on a program, the funding should be significant. And we're asking to approve this application this evening. Any questions?
Questions from Council at this point? Thank you.
Thank you.
We have a resolution before us. Do we have a mover and a second? I'm sorry. The public hearing, is there anyone that's here on item C1? If not, close the public hearing. Thank you.
Madam here.
Yes, Councilwoman Kirwin?
I'll move the resolution as printed, Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, 2010 application.
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Kirwin, seconded by Councilwoman Belkermani, that we approve the resolution as printed in the agenda. Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Councilwoman Guinness?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Shilling?
Yes.
Councilwoman Belkermani?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Horvath?
Yes.
Kirwin?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next public hearing is to receive public input on the City of Royal Oak Hospital Finance Authority utilizing tax-exempt bonds for William Beaumont Hospital Troy. And is it, is it Mr. LaCarri presenting, or Mr. Lomorato? Yes.
Mayor and City Council, as required by the Internal Revenue Code, we are holding this public hearing on behalf of the City Royal Oak Hospital Finance Authority, so they can issue tax-exempt bonds for various improvement projects and to refinance indebtedness for certain hospital facilities at William Beaumont Hospital Troy. The issuance of these bonds will not have any effect on the city of Troy, of our ability to issue bonds, nor will have any liability, the city will not have any liability for these bonds. We've held these several times in the past, and I think we have representatives from the hospital there also.
Yes, we do.
Hi, I'm--
Yes, would you like to come forward to the mic? Yes, we have. Good evening. Give us your names, please.
I'm Demis Harryk. I'm the Assistant Chief Financial Officer.
I'm Hyster Hagan. I'm with Miller Cantfield Re-Servis Bond Council to the City of Royal Oak Hospital Finance Authority.
Thank you. Do you, do you have any further information other than what we've received already in the packet and the usual resolution?
Usual, usual form, yes.
Right. But be willing to answer any questions anybody has.
Council, do you have any questions at this time? Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll open the public hearing. We had one person who signed up for this. Mr. Reinhardt, you wish to speak on this particular item?
Yes.
Yes.
I'd just like to know the reason, one of the reasons I'm standing up before you, because I was going to put fish in Lake Sanctuary, and they said it was so polluted, you couldn't eat the fish. So for the past four or five years, I'm on the internet. When they ask about Troy Beaumont, I talk about the Love Canal right behind it, to the point, people are calling me up and asking me about the Love Canal behind the Beaumont. Now, I tried to find information on this, and it's an old unrestricted waste dump that everybody seems to forget. But don't worry, I let everybody know about it who, who responds to my email. I operate only 20 different names on the internet in order to penetrate some of the walls you people put up. Now, Troy Beaumont already asked me if I want to bury their drainage thing. I said, no, I'm going after the whole lake area, because somehow, nobody knows what's there, but people are getting rashes inside that Beaumont, because I was one of them. They don't know where the rashes are coming from, but people are getting rashes up there. And pretty soon, there's going to be a big one on that place. So I'm glad the city's not going to lose any money on these bonds.
Is there anyone else that's here on this item that wishes to speak? Public hearing is open. If not, we'll close the public hearing. We turn it to the council table. Do we have a resolution? Councilwoman Slater?
Mayor, I'll move the resolution as printed.
Support.
Moved by Councilman Slater, seconded by Councilman Fleming, that we approve the resolution as printed. Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Councilwoman Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Shilling?
Yes.
Councilwoman Belkermani?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Horvath?
Yes.
Keegan?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next, with our new rules and procedure, we are at the section of members of the public to comment. This is the opportunity for the public to comment on an agenda item or items that are not on the agenda. The rules state that any member of the public, not a petitioner of an item, shall be allowed to speak for up to five minutes to address postponed regular business or consent agenda items or any other as permitted under the Open Meetings Act during the public comment portion of the agenda. If we have a request for more than 15, 15 or more people to speak, then we can adjust the time. I have a printed copy of those that signed up to speak and the items that they were interested in, and it does not exceed the 15, so we won't need to have that rule. And I ask that when I call your name and you come to the front podium here to speak, that you speak on the items that you wish to speak on, but that I ask that all members of the audience not shout or raise their voice, nor use obscenities, and that you keep to the five-minute limit that is required. And so therefore, I will begin by calling on those that are present that have signed up for this item. Harry Filo?
I am Harry Filo. I'm a 22-year resident of Troy, and I wanted to speak about D2, the, the millage, the special election and the millage increase. I was, up until September 25th, I was always one of the people that would stay at home and, and I'd be flipping around the channels, and every once in a while, I'd get to see a city council meeting and, but I would never come until, until September 25th, when I realized that city services that I used, like the library, the community center, were being threatened by pressing budget issues. I spoke on September 28th. I was going to speak at another meeting, but it went long. And what I wanted to say tonight is that I congratulate all the newly-formed city council. And we, when, when the election happened last, last Tuesday, we, we celebrated for a moment, and then we realized that our next focus was to continue to fight to save Troy. And I want to ask the voters to, to approve a millage rate increase of, for the next five years, to be utilized to restore public safety, quality of life, like, as said, the library, community center, and the museum. And I have been, when I was going door-to-door in support of candidates for this election, the people that I would talk to were in support of city services, and I want to encourage the council to support their services. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Johnson, you signed up on F11 and 12. Are you here for, to speak as an individual, or-- Are you here to speak as an individual or because those are items, you work for Walgreens? Okay. We will be getting to those items later. Do you wish to say anything at this point?
No.
Okay, thank you. Marv Reinhardt?
This is Street Public.
Marvin, if you come to this microphone...
No problem. Sorry, reminded me when I went to Baker Junior High, when all the chosen ones who got on student council, you know, I was a lobbys. I just stood up and left.
There, move the, there, thank you. Now, Mr. Reinhardt, let me explain here. Because we have the new rule, this is five minutes, you may speak on any of the items that you wish to at this time. All right? Either on the agenda or not on the agenda.
Right.
Just the five minutes.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
I'm going to begin by saying this. When somebody in this city accidentally sells a pack of cigarettes or a bottle of beer by accident, they get severely punished by this city. They get brought up in front of here and chastised because somebody in that organization sold something out of place. Two dollars, maybe a cigarette. No endangerment to the community. But when the police department loses forty grand, it was okay. In fact, you gave them awards for losing that money. I've seen pictures of all these great people that served our city. So this is basically, you know, it's hard for me to say, Mayor Shilling, you have lost control of this city. From the police department to the library, yesterday at the library, there was a policeman going to ticket people going the wrong way to the library. I said, why don't you go back, find your forty grand? Don't be ticketing these people at the library. She was filling out forms to ticket people. Now, because of that, I'm going to ask you to resign. You attacked many a store owner up here, embarrassed them with their attorney up here, chastised them for five or six minutes. I didn't see no chastising of the police department. All I see is awards. So I guess forty grand is nothing to this police department. And I got more written down here, but basically, that's what I have to say. Because I have to talk to my ma last night about the city here in Troy. Can you understand, Wade? My dad owned everything at Troy Baptist. He owned the whole stock of Troy Baptist. You know who Troy Baptist is now? Okay? So that's how much I know these people in Troy Baptist and how crooked they are. The McComes? All right? Sue me, McColl. I'm going to bring up other names. And last week, in that towing thing, the guy waved seventy pages of complaints against one of our Troy vendors, Coleman Young. You know what? He never submitted those papers, but when somebody out there said they had some type of evidence, you all wanted to see what was the problem. And that place is already overcharging its customers, A&amp;M, according to Coleman Young. Coleman. They already charged violating it because there's no oversight here. Now, I talked to Senator Levin, and I can sue you for the loss of that forty thousand because you're responsible for it. I'll be up here every two weeks asking why the forty grand is missing wasn't recorded since 2005. Your people have shamed you. Not you, you're a good person. You can only get what these people give you. And when they make you vote the third or fourth vote, most places make the mayor vote the deciding vote, not somewhere in between, so they don't even give you the respect of being mayor. Okay? And then last week, when the chamber came in here and said fifty years of celebration, now they're changing to anniversary. You know who was the president then? My father was. So they're disgracing me. So I'm jumping all over Bank of America every day. Their headquarters down in South Carolina. I'm very effective what I'm doing. Okay? So you guys can just laugh you want, drag me out of here, but I work twenty-four hours to make sure this city's square. Now, some of this stuff on the agenda, I already showed Senator Peters, and it's almost illegal, he said. All right? Almost illegal. But that's how Troy operates, almost illegal. Okay? But just rest assured, I'm going to make sure the rats are out of here, and when Bill Karner took me off that Troy leadership, he just insulted me again. So Bill, this is for you. And these newspapers, and don't put it into my criticism in this city, I wake up their editors at night. When I leave here, I call them up on their cell phone. So I really don't care. They can sue me all they want. I live in a trailer, and I live off of a charity, like everybody else in Troy. Five Oh One Three's charity. Go take my money. And if you think this is going to be a stepping stone for you, you've just lost your career because I break careers. I'm just a worker, and I don't hold anything against the Z-Man because he tricked you. Everybody tricks this council. So just remember, you're being watched. And as far as you guys go, Googling every one of your relatives because now you're public servants. And somebody says, Slater, you're going to chase people down. Check my resume, okay? Check mine. Have a good day.
Mr. Savage, you signed up to speak?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Savage.
Good evening, City Council. I would like to congratulate Mr. Fleming on his reelection and Ms. McInnes and Mr. Slater on their elections to council.
Thank you.
At the last meeting, I signed up to speak on a J item, Transit Center, but because the meeting went late, I was on the sound of all that I didn't get time. Oh, I should mention, my name is James Savage. I am almost thirty-five years living in the city of Troy. I do appear at these meetings from time to time, and I think I have somewhat of a reputation of being a critic. That's my nature, but I also like to be very constructive in my criticism. And that's what I have today. It is a little lengthier than my normal comments.
Just five minutes, Mr. Savage.
I probably, if I can get through, I will ask for an extension. I know that happens from time to time, but I understand if it can't be, I can finish it at the next meeting. Okay, I want to talk about the Transit Center. I also would like to say that I would like to have this issue placed on the agenda as an agenda item, and I would be the petitioner, and therefore, I would be allowed all the time I want. But years ago, I did try to do this, and it was regarding pedestrian safety in Troy. I sent a letter to the, in fact, I delivered it personally to the city manager's office, as was, I believe, the procedure, and I never heard any more. So I have no option but to go with this. Okay, I think the Transit Center is more about spending taxpayer money than about transportation. The city government has been sitting on this for ten years, so they obviously do not have much enthusiasm for it. Now, because there might be federal or state tax money available, it's a can't-rate issue. Let me remind you that federal and state money is our money, and we do not want it wasted. A few months ago, a new transit center in downtown Detroit was opened. It took over three years to build, and I haven't been able to find out what the cost was, but I'm sure it was incredible. It is not a transit center. It is a city bus depot. It does not link with any other form of transportation, either rail, air, or river. I saw no area for passenger pickup or drop-off. I saw a stand for smart buses, but I didn't see anything for Troy. As a city bus depot, it is very functional, and it is well-placed to serve the people of Detroit within the city. In the city people, whether residing or working, need a bus service. Public transportation is their only way of getting to or from work. However, I see the operation of the bus service as totally inefficient. Two weeks before the Detroit Depot opened, I stood on the corner of Cass and Michigan Ave, where the depot is located, and in the time it took me to wait for the lights to change, four four-size buses passed me with only the driver, no passengers whatsoever, and these buses were in service. They were not going back to the depot. Over twenty years after People Mover was built at a cost of about four times the original estimate, I am sometimes the only passenger on the train, so my fifty cents doesn't get very far. I've brought this efficiency, inefficiency, to the notice of council many times. Full-size smart buses coming in and going from Oakland Mall with only one or two passengers. I suggested a commuter bus service along Sixty and Mar Road from I-94 to the east, on the east side, to Kmart headquarters and the Sheffield Office Complex on the west side. That was years ago when big people employed thousands of workers. It would have worked with no cost to the community, but no one wanted to listen. I'm going to ask for extra time, but I will understand if...
Well, Mr. Savage, I'm afraid you're going to have to come at the next meeting and continue on with your items.
Okay.
Thank you.
It's a pity because my constructive part was at the end. Thank you.
That concludes those that signed up to speak either on an agenda item or in comments that are items that are not on the agenda. We have a matter of a postponed, pardon? A postponed item that we have to bring forward at this time, and that is nominations and appointment to the personnel board. Yes? I'm sorry, ma'am. Yes, I'm sorry. Would you like to speak, ma'am?
Yes.
Give us your name.
Quansey. I'm Kathy Kerner, and I'm a resident of Troy. And I just have a couple of quick things. The first is in regards to your adoption of rules and procedures. I think that you need to take a look at your attendance procedure and policy because you are elected officials by us. And whether you are business people or not, you run for an office that you are telling us you are going to be at when we need you every Monday night or every other Monday night. And there are some members that do not show up, and it's not fair to us, the public, if you are not here, whether they be absences, just absences, or whether they are quote "excused absences." There has to be a limit as to how many absences there are allowed before that person is eliminated from the council. Again, it's not fair to the public that that person is not here representing the council. And the second thing that I just wanted to say, and I know Kathy already talked, and you guys are sick of hearing about the library. You guys missed my speech last week, but I just have one thing to say, and I just want you guys to keep in mind that the library, unlike City Hall, is actually a city building that draws people inside and encourages them to stay. They don't want to leave. So just keep that in mind. And if you could, again, look at your procedures on your absences because we, the public, are very concerned about absences on the council. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that I've missed? Being that it's almost nine, we should take a break at nine. I think we'll take our recess for five minutes and then return to the postponed items.
Is there discussion of the motion?
Mayor.
Councilman Slater.
Mayor, although this is my first meeting, I want to say that I've spent a lot of time on this issue in the past two months. I've been provided a lot of data. I've read the data. I've talked to citizens for two months. I want to thank the administration for your hard work and the data that you provided me. I'm confident that it's accurate. So, having said that, I'm prepared to vote today. I think it's time to move forward, and I'm ready. Thank you.
Further comments? Yes, Councilman Fleming?
Yes. I know, I've read all the data as well that city staff has put together. And I know that the latest communication we had from our city manager, Mr. Zurlak, he's still meeting with employees. It's very difficult to determine what concessions we might be able to get. You've got a number of unions and employee groups. I know you're working on that. Do you have any indication, anything you can share with us? Because I really think, I've said this all along, it's very important before we move forward, and I'm all for having the residents vote as to what they want, but I have some serious reservations about moving forward not knowing what concessions we can expect or what we might have, even if we do something on a contingency basis.
Mr. Zurlak?
I'll be happy to respond. We currently have six labor organizations and two groups where there is a pending election. I believe ballots are going to go out for those two groups sometime this month, and the balloting would close sometime in December. I'm going to talk about the two groups that are under the pendency of a labor election first, because that's the easiest. I'm not allowed to make any promises or change any conditions of those employees' work because I can. In other words, a labor organization can make all kinds of promises because they don't have to deliver. But if I make a promise, I've got to deliver on that. So, Merck doesn't allow me to make any promises or make any comments that I can deliver on, which essentially, as a representative of the employer, I can deliver on all comments that I make. So, with those two groups, I more or less have to take a wait-and-see approach in terms of whether or not they wish to join organized labor. My personal opinion is that the timing is horrible for that, and it sends a wrong message to the community. With the other labor organizations, I do have a letter on file from the Fire Service Officers Association. They've indicated a 5 percent reduction in wages, which essentially comes to more than 5 percent when you add some of the roll-up costs involved in there. I do have a letter from the Command Officers Association of the Police Department indicating a willingness to work. And what I plan on doing is talking to the labor groups as we continue. But one thing I am hearing is that there needs to be a partnership between the governing body, the community, and the employees. And that partnership, I think, is predicated on the ability of the community to see what they want to do in terms of a millage increase, as would be advanced by the governing body. I'm hearing that. I don't want to use the word mistrust, but what I'm hearing is that there's a concern if I extract concessions with specificity from the employee groups. One of the options the council has is, "Thanks a lot, John. Let's take those concessions and cancel a couple of capital projects, and we're good to go for a year, and we'll look at another $6 million reduction in the subsequent year." I think in order to make a bona fide partnership, there needs to be a commitment from all parties to let the, number one, and this is what I'm hearing, that the voter should be able to make a decision on what kind of community they want in conjunction with concessions by employees. I've spoken to a lot of people in the last couple of months, and there's always a group of people that, no matter what I say, want to participate in having a millage increase. There's another group that, no matter what I say, will never want to participate in having a millage increase. There's a third group that are undecided. And the undecided group, in every case, wants to assure that there's not going to be a millage increase consideration to pad the payroll or benefits of the employees. And my response is that, and I've told the labor organizations as well, my response is that there needs to be a partnership between the employees giving concessions, as well as the community, determining what they want, what kind of community they want to have. It just can't be a millage increase. On the other hand, it just should not be concessions by the employees, because if you take a look, and I'm sorry for the long answer, but if you take a look at the benefits that our employees have compared to other municipalities. We can start with a large ticket item, which is retirement. We currently have a system in place for the past several years where all hires, going back for some groups to 1997, are in a defined contribution pension plan. And a defined contribution pension plan has no tail to it. In other words, when an employee is gone, that employee is gone. There's no longer any obligation by the employer to fund anything for that employee. And that's now across the board for all employee groups. There are still several employees that are still in the defined benefit plan, but those are employees that have been here for a longer period of time. And eventually, at some point in time, there will be no one left in that system. And everyone that's here or that is retired would be in the defined contribution plan. Also, for all employee groups, all new hires no longer participate in the city's retiree healthcare plan. Instead, there is a trust or a stipend that's paid by the city and the employee for that benefit. There have been benefits that were inured to older tenured employees, like longevity, that's no longer applicable for newer hires. That goes back a number of years. So, if you take a look at that and compare that to any other city, I think you'll find that we're ahead of the curve in that respect. So, it's a long answer, but that's where I am. With the employee groups, I'm still talking with them. I still believe that we can get concessions from all groups. And I think that, should the council decide to have a election advance to the voting public, that it be imperative that the employees participate in concessions so that there is a partnership. That's what I'm hearing.
Further discussion of the motion?
Madam Mayor, can I speak?
Yes. Councilwoman McGinnis?
I would just like to briefly concur with some of the statements made by Councilwoman Slater over the past several months while we were campaigning. I think I feel very comfortable saying that I've been living and breathing these issues that have been before City Council, and that citizens of the city of Troy have been working together to understand and bring to light over the past, I'm sorry, for the past several months. So, I do feel comfortable discussing this issue and coming to terms with some of the things that need to be worked out this evening. I do have two questions that I would like to ask Mr. Zurlak, if possible.
Yes, certainly. Mr. Zurlak?
My first question would be, I think some of the concerns stems from the uncertainty about what 1.9 mill increase would mean. I know that there has been several discussions, and there's been a lot of information provided via the website and via handouts, and obviously through discussions we've had here at city council meetings over the last several months. But my question to you now is whether or not we would have the ability to provide information specifically on each of the individual taxpayers' bills that would show comparisons, they would reflect comparisons from 2009 and 2010, when people receive this information in the coming months.
I can certainly respond to that. I believe that that is the case when the tax bill goes out or the notice of assessment.
Mr. Zurlak, just a minute. Can you focus at the back here, Mr. Zurlak? Mr. Zurlak, sorry. I wish our sound system were better. And I don't like that you interrupt people to say, "Use the mic," but I think it's important for people to hear your response.
If I could be heard now? Okay. I had spoken briefly with Mr. Licari, and we spoke about that question specifically. Every February notice of a tax assessment goes out, and a question was advanced, is it possible to advise on a homeowner basis, once we know what the assessed valuation is by the end of the year, if the resident or homeowner could be advised what their assessed value was for 2009, what it's going to be for 2010, what their tax bill was, their local tax bill was for 2009, and what it would be estimated, of course, for 2010, assuming no millage increase. In fact, Mr. Randall had sent me a letter just today indicating his own house, how that would look for the past several years. So, that answer is yes. We can, that can be done. Mr. Licari can answer that more eloquently than I. If you need further information in that regard, or else you can let that answer stand.
I think that answer is sufficient.
Okay.
My second question would be, I understand that a lot of focus has obviously been placed on the proposed millage increase, as well as the employee concessions. But I know that there's also been discussion of what would, what the outcome would be to privatize, regionalize, and consolidate some of the services. So, I understand that all three, all five of those things would be working in conjunction to balance the budget. But my question is, and it probably relates somewhat to, I'm sorry, Mayor Potem Fleming's comments as well. What if, as we continue our efforts in the coming months in terms of all of these things that need to be done to balance the budget, we determine that less than 1.9 mil would be needed to balance? Is it possible that less than that would be levied if the full amount is approved by the voters in a February election?
Absolutely. That's up to the, it's up to the manager and his staff to present a balanced budget, and it's up to the city council to determine what that budget looks like. So, if the, if there was an authorization up to 1.9 mils and through cost-cutting measures, which would include privatization and regionalization, as well as employee concessions and other things we could find cost-cutting measures on, it may not take 1.9 mils. It could be up to that amount. Having mentioned that, I did, and one thing we did not really delve into was the methodology. This is an answer to your question, as well as Mr. Fleming's question, about what we're being asked by employees. Because when I talk to the employees, I'm always asked, you know, if there are concessions, does this mean that there will still be a reduction in the workforce as a result of privatization and regionalization? And the answer is, yes, there will be. It's the job of the city council to determine what they want Troy to look like, say, five years from now. It's our job to indicate how we'll get there in the most cost-efficient fashion. Having said that, I've already assembled a team, which consists of Mr. Dick Carlisle, who's the president of Carlisle-Wortman Associates out of Ann Arbor, to take a look and work with Mr. Lamorato, our assistant manager, Mr. Mark Miller, our assistant manager, Ms. Peggy Sears, our HR director, and Susan, Mrs. Susan Leirstein, our director of purchasing, to form a core, to look at every department, to see where economies can be achieved. And I know we've spoken quite a bit about the building and engineering departments, but eventually, and in a fairly expedient fashion, Mr. Carlisle is going to look at all departments. In fact, I've put him in charge of my staff in this regard because he has a more global perspective in this area. He has about 25 clients where he does this. And if I may, Your Honor, I'd like to bring Dick up, and he can explain what the methodology is.
The, we are always anxious for more information. However, there are some items that you've asked us to respond to in your D item in addition to, do we want to approve a millage for five years? And ask staff to prepare the ballot language. So, it would come back to us then to approve the ballot language after it's written. And so, I was hopeful that we could take care of, you know, do things in portions instead of mixing everything together. Councilmembers, what do you feel at this point that you'd like to do? Councilwoman Kerwin, I didn't hear. Excuse me.
I'm ready to vote. I remember now Councilmember Howrlech, who said fisher, kitch, bait, cut bait, literally. So, maybe it's time to fisher or cut bait, and then deal with all the other items after.
Because there were some other responses, I think, that you're expecting from us tonight. Is that correct, Mr. Zurlak, in addition to this one?
Yes, in the letter I had crafted in October 30th, there's certain things that we could use for discussion items. This is one of the items that is contained in the letter, on whether you want the voters to decide this matter.
Okay. That's why I think it's important if we could have a vote on this and then go to some of those other items.
Mayor? Mayor?
Yes, Councilman Slater, then Councilman.
I don't know if I, I don't know if this should wait, but just as a follow-up to what Maureen said about putting categories on the next tax notification in February, what do we have to do to get that done? Do we have to, can we just say we'd like it done, or do we have to do something?
Mr. Zurlak?
I believe that that's an option on the notification that goes out to all the homeowners, not only in Troy, but across the state of Michigan. But I'd like Mr. Licari to explain further.
Thank you. Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. It is indeed an option that's available on the change of assessment notice. I'd like to be real specific on that language there. It's not a tax notification by any stretch of the imagination. It's a change of assessment notice. And it's an option that's going to be used by Oakland County and all of the jurisdictions that they assess this year. It is an option that the software provider has given to all the communities that use it. And while it will not specify last year's taxes, this year's taxes, and the change, it will specify a reduction in taxes or an increase in taxes as the change in taxable value dictates. So, for instance, on my own particular house, we ran a test on that without any changes to anything in my home at this point in time. It says that the change in your taxes is estimated to be $75 this year. That's before we've done any work on next year's assessments. Had my assessment gone up slightly, or my taxable value gone up slightly, it would have said the same thing, that change in your taxable value is plus whatever that number would be. So, again, it's a change in assessment notice, and it will estimate the difference from last year's taxes and this year's taxes.
Councilman Howrlech?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that, you know, if the majority of council is in favor of a February special election, then I think it's absolutely a good idea to move forward at this point. I still stand by my comments that council does need to fisher, cut bait. My personal objection is to the special election. And I think if there's going to be a mill levy change, then it should happen at a regularly scheduled election. That's my primary interest. Secondarily, I would say, if you can give it as much lead time as possible, that's important. So, then I would say, if you're going to have a special election, do it in May. But if you still want to have a special election in February, you absolutely need to get the ball rolling, because I think you need people the opportunity to do their homework before they go to the polls. And finally, I would add that I absolutely believe that we shouldn't have a change in precinct locations. I think even if we save $10,000 or $20,000, I think the amount of disruption it does to the voting public is not worth the cost savings. So, that's all I have to say at this point.
We can still do the consolidated precincts like we did for this past election, which saves us money, correct?
That is correct. We would not be relocating any precincts. We would consolidate precincts within a building into one precinct. So, it cuts our numbers down, but it doesn't ruin anyone within the city.
Councilman Belltomeni, did you want to speak on the motion?
I did. I wanted to make sure that, in essence, the act of voting would be in the same place it was in November if we did it in February, because I, like Councilman Howrlech, I would be concerned about an election at a time when we don't usually have one, and then someone has to hunt for their polling place. I don't think that's right, fair, or even-handed in the least. I am most concerned that we get this done tonight because we tend to have trouble with ballot language at this table. And we have two meetings left before it has to be finalized. So, if we are going to do this in February, if we are going to ask the people of Troy to retain full service in the city, I believe that we have to put this language into the hopper tonight and get it going so that we've got a couple of times to look at it and critique it. So, that's where I am.
Thank you. Mrs. Bartholomew, the vote, please.
Councilmember Fleming?
No.
Howrlech?
No.
Kerwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schelling?
Yes.
Councilman Belltomeni?
Yes.
Motion passes. Mr. Zurlak, will we be able to have ballot language back to us by the next meeting two weeks from today?
We'll work in conjunction with the law department and the clerk's office. So, if Lori says yes, the answer is yes.
Okay. Mrs. Bloom?
And we certainly will bring it back to you at the earliest date possible, and we're hoping that that will be the next one.
Okay. Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Councilwoman Belltomeni?
Before we move on too far, we had the America Recycles proclamation tonight, and now we're talking about a millage increase. I am concerned that not enough of us are doing what is free. We had 14 percent of the households in Troy use their recycling option last year. And I asked Mr. Richneck what that meant. And we were credited, as a community, with $240,625 against our trash costs for those 14 percent of the households that actually recycled. And we avoided $111,520 in trash charges. That's a $350,000 swing. That if 28 percent of the households had recycled, the whole and the trash budget would have been filled without taking anything from the general fund or anywhere else. So, part of this, we each can do a nickel at a time rather than have other funding be available. It's easy, it's free. Just do it. Thank you.
And Councilman Belltomeni, I'm glad you brought that up at this point, because one of the items that Mr. Zurlak has on page five of his memo is one more point about the general capital fund. The refuse fund was in trouble this fiscal year due to the tune of $350,000, and a transfer of .07 mils from the general capital was used to balance that amount. It's going to be worse next year, fiscal year, as we estimate that the refuse fund will need approximately .92 mil levy or a .17, .17 mil increase. This represents a projected $775,000 shortfall in the refuse fund for 2010, 2011. And we talked about the refuse fund at this table a few years ago and projected about revenue costs at that time. This is part of the puzzle here. And that's why Mr. Zurlak in his memo was saying it, and all of us at the council table are saying, there are more pieces to this puzzle than just the 1.9 mils for five years. That's only one piece of the puzzle. But by approving, sending it, setting a special election and getting the ballot language, we're at least saying we want to solve that part of the puzzle. Now, we need to go to these other parts that Mr. Zurlak has asked us to respond to. And at the last meeting, we have two new council members since we said that we didn't want an independent library board. We sort of nodded. We didn't have a vote on all of these, but we gave an indication to him. And that we didn't want a millage for a specific use. Those two are still listed here, but I think that was the general consensus of all of us that were here at that time, that we didn't want to do that. We did indicate that we, Mr. Zurlak's area of, Ms. Baileywick, is seeking employee concessions, a reasonable amount. And I'm sure that now they can have a discussion of that. We talked about the general fund millage increase. We need to talk about the use of the budget stabilization fund balance. And also, we need to talk about transferring some funds from the general capital to the general operating. Is that correct, Mr. Zurlak?
That's correct.
Too long?
No, that's correct.
Okay. So, which piece of the puzzle do you want us to talk about now? Do you want Mr. Carlisle to say something in addition to what was stated that fits into these categories, or do you want us to ask questions?
Well, it may be germane to your discussion to know the methodology that we're going to employ by looking at each department. And to that end, I'd like to ask Mr. Carlisle to explain the methods he's going to use.
Because one of the things, come on, Mr. Carlisle, up here. One of the things we do need to demonstrate to the general public is that we are doing everything we can within all of the departments in the city to cut back on costs, but still provide quality service. That's the key. Mr. Carlisle?
Yes, Madam Mayor, and members of council. Well, all within the context of the options and alternatives that Mr. Zurlak has been presenting to you, which includes consolidation and regionalization, as well as exploring all methods of creating efficiencies in government in all departments. Mr. Zurlak has asked me to be part of a team, and I think he named the other members, that is looking at various aspects of potential privatization of certain functions of city government. This is not only timely, obviously, but it is something that many local units of government are being forced at this point in time to look at, simply because of the constrained revenues that everyone in Michigan is really feeling. So, you're not alone in that particular regard. And as a matter of fact, we've had some experience in actually assisting other units of government, as well as actually providing those services over the last number of years. We're going to go about this in a systematic process. I will say that we have had quite a bit of discussion early on with both the building and the engineering departments, simply because of some of the volumes of work that both of those departments do. And it was, they were, particularly the building department's been a likely candidate to be able to make that evaluation fairly soon, simply because their structure and their revenues and being a revenue-based department has made it fairly clear to understand how we might be able to take certain functions of that and privatize it. Engineering, of course, has always done a great aspect of what they do from that standpoint. But we are meeting with the engineering department to see what additional steps and measures might be taken. We will be systematically evaluating each department using the following protocol. First, we're going to identify a schedule with the departments to be evaluated in consultation with respective assistant city managers. And obviously, we would like to try to take those departments first where we can have the greatest impact in the shortest period of time. We plan on doing this in conjunction with, and in discussions with the department heads. There'll be full partners at the table in terms of discussing this, along with the respective assistant city managers, to really discuss what the assignment is and the challenges before us, in terms of what functions possibly could be outsourced in their particular departments, or what may simply not be as efficient. We will identify these options with our committee, and then we'll, from there, develop a plan and specifications for each of those functions that could possibly be privatized. And let me also say that there are some opportunities within here of consolidation, or actually regionalization, because actually, regionalization really could occur through the selection of a single contractor, for example, by more than one municipality. And in that case, buying power is really going to make, is really going to be helpful in terms of trying to bargain for the best contractual price. Once we've developed those plans and specifications for each of the identified functions, we will be reviewing that with our committee, as well as the department heads. And then we'll be finalizing those we'll be finalizing those results with Mr. Zerlag. And he will certainly have a final word on moving forward with that particular aspect of things. Mr. Zerlag has indicated in your report that once our proposals have been, once proposals have been received from private parties, that city staff will have a chance to compete with that. However, the overall goal is to try to meet an objective of a 40 percent savings, and that's the target that we are attempting to try to meet. So it's a fairly aggressive approach here. I will not to say that we will have all of this done by the end of the year, but I think we'll begin to have a pretty clear picture. We'll be preparing a progress report for you very soon from our committee. And at any time, look forward to any input, questions, or direction from city council also in this particular regard. If you're happy to answer any questions you might have.
Questions for Mr. Carlisle at this point? I'm sure we're going to have more details.
Oh, yes.
As we progress. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, Councilwoman Belltramini?
Can I ask a question?
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see, I didn't see your hand. I'm sorry, you see, you know, we switched sides here. I got to get my act together here of looking for signals.
Apologize, I missed it also.
Some people say mayor, some people signal with their hands, so.
Mr. Carlisle, you said that the goal is a composite 40 percent savings.
Yes.
And that will be done by function, is how you're doing the plans and specs on this.
Correct.
And knowing that roughly 70 percent of the budget are personnel costs, I still feel like we're having a fire sale on employee jobs. And so my question for you is, do you have, do you have a plan in your head on how to achieve that 40 percent?
Well, that's a difficult question. There are certain, there are certain functions that are clearer than others, to be very honest. There are ones that still need to be evaluated, and as to whether it is possible to outsource that particular function, will be a function of it, that would be part of what the committee evaluates. Clearly, we have to also evaluate, you know, what, and of course, that's ultimately a policy decision as to the level of service that this council wants to see with various functions. So there will be, we will reach certain points where there will certainly need to be more direction provided as to whether that's the direction you want to go. But, you know, let me also say in that regard that with this, this is also challenging everyone to look at every conceivable efficiency that can be built in to the functions of city government. So it, I believe that it's inducing, you know, an encouragement to do that also, so that the sole source of savings may not come strictly through privatization, it may come through the evaluation of various other functions. For example, you may be aware that we are also in the process of assisting the city with the, with the energy block grant monies that the city received in terms of evaluating how energy efficiencies can be brought about, in which we, on a preliminary basis, we've already identified a number of areas where those efficiencies can be brought in. So I think it's really, it's a, it's a, it's a challenge in terms of, at all levels right now, to try to affect as many efficiencies as possible, which includes privatization, which includes regionalization and consolidation. It's also brought about a lot of discussion between neighboring units of government in terms of how we might best share resources also. So I will not say that it'll come, you know, that it will come solely through privatization because I think that kind of discussion will bring out some other creativity in terms of how other dollars can be saved.
And that is pretty much what I wanted you to hear because, or what I wanted you to say, whether you knew it or not.
Didn't.
It is, it is my opinion that organizations that change and change effectively, change because the people who are involved in them, the little people who are involved in them, make those changes that are most beneficial for the organization. And when you say, "We're going to regionalize, we're going to privatize," and John's been saying it for two months as well, that's very scary to me because, as far as I am concerned, the reason we have had a nine-point-whatever tax rate in the city of Troy is because we have employees who are vested, many of whom are also taxpayers in the city, and want to do what is best for the community. And when you say to me, "You're going to take 40 percent of those people, most likely, and put them on the street and contract this out from somebody in Shelby Township," that doesn't give me a level of comfort.
Sure.
That those effective changes will continue. So that's, that's where I am in this, and that's why I asked the question if personnel would be the first or the last thing. And in essence, what you said to me is creativity and efficiency will be most important.
This has to be, this is, this is being conducted, let me say, in a, in a very participatory way, trying to, you know, as I think I've said before many times, that one of the pleasures for me as a consultant working with the city of Troy is working with the quality of staff that you have. And while obviously that staff is being challenged right now, as we all are, whether we're in private business, you know, like me, or whether we're in, you know, in public service or otherwise, we're all being challenged at this particular time to do everything that we are doing in a much more creative and efficient manner. And that's really predominantly what the assignment, I think, really rests, and that is to really challenge, how can we squeeze, you know, more, meeting functions and meeting the taxpayers' desires really out of fewer dollars?
Thank you.
Your Honor?
Yes, Mr. Zerlag?
One thing that's, thank you. One thing that's worth iterating, if you will, is that not every department will be slated for privatization or regionalization. You know, you don't want to go up to a, you don't want to call the police department and have them ask you for your credit card details. But there are departments that are more conducive than others for the private sector to come in and see what they can provide at a certain cost, especially those departments that provide on-demand type services and some departments where you have a blending of private sector abilities with public sector abilities. It's incumbent upon us to see where the cost efficiencies are, and, you know, our charge is to do that. I think that's the pact that we have with the community, to take a look. Number one, is everybody busy? That's the first question we have to ask because there are, there is some reduced workloads in some parts of the organization as a result of the, you know, the external stimuli to our organization. Then number two, we ask, is there services that we're performing that's on demand that could be performed more efficiently in the private sector or more efficiently, more cost-efficiently by another plane of government? And then we ask, is there anyone in the private sector that could perform a similar service, same level of service than what we're paying? And then we'll let the council know what those differences are and make a decision in terms of how to proceed. But as Mr. Carlisle also said, one of the positive externalities of this will be, because we're looking at every department, is just to see where there are efficiencies that could be made. And our preference would always be, if we can keep costs equal, to retain in-house as opposed to going to the private sector. There's more control with an in-house employee than there is with the, with the private sector. And our personal objective or our favorite outcome would be to have consolidation with other municipalities in terms of delivering service because when there's consolidation, there's a better economy of scale that we achieve, which makes it more, not only more cost-efficient, but also more cost-effective at that time. So we're looking at all these things, and we're going to come out of this as a better organization.
Councilwoman Kirwin, with your question for Mr. Carlisle or for Mr. Zerlag?
Maybe even for, um.
Pardon?
Maybe, no, not for Mr. Carlisle.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Go ahead.
But perhaps for Assistant Manager John Lamorato. And I'm just wondering if perhaps you could address, because it was the previous city manager when we did the, and you know I mess up the name every time, John, the Vector or the Zucker Report, which really addressed efficiencies and stream, was it Zucker? Thank you all. Streamlining inefficiencies. So we were actually on that path of streamlining efficiencies, weren't we, Assistant Manager Lamorato, far before this trigger?
I'll pass it on to Mark Miller. This is area more than mine.
Thank you. I mean, the simple answer of the question is yes. In fact, Mr. Carlisle and I are utilizing the Zucker Report for assistance and direction. And there are certain things such as the use of computers in inspectors' cars which could help along with efficiencies. So we are utilizing those 101 recommendations in the Zucker Report.
And, Madam Mayor, perhaps that could be made available to the newer council members that sent to them, so they'll have access to that as well. I bring that up because I'm very pleased that Councilmember Belltramini brought up the value of our experienced staff, and particularly those who live and work in the same place and really have a vested interest. So I was pleased to hear with that. However, there's the realization that streamline as we do, be as efficient as we can, money still comes down to personnel, and that there will somewhere in there be that realization, even with a 1.9 million for five years, that that's going to impact people's jobs.
That's correct.
But my question is, Mr. Zerlag, we haven't discussed the other items. And with those other items, does that, how does that impact number of employees that perhaps would have to be laid off? If we do, you know, you're asking about general capital to general operating, you're asking about the budget stabilization fund, all of that, it's an interplay of all those things together.
It's an interplay of all those things together. And well before the first letter went out in September, primarily, it started with Mr. Lamorato and Mr. Murphy and myself, and then went into Mr. Lamorato and Mr. Miller and myself. And then we brought in my direct reports, primarily the two chiefs of police and fire, Peggy Sears of HR, and Nina Lacari, our city assessor, our city clerk. And we took a look at the financing and the way that we operate. And then we went to every department head and spoke to them about the model that we developed, which was option one, if you will. And, you know, we started out by trying to just try to save some money in certain areas without any layoffs. That was impossible. Okay? Then we went to certain departments after speaking with folks in the private sector like Mr. Carlisle and other gentlemen and ladies that own and operate engineering firms and said, "You know, we understand the level of service may not be the same, but would there be a cost savings going to the private sector for on-demand type of services?" And the answer was yes. And the response is about 40 percent. So the 40 percent savings for some departments in option one is already baked into that model. It's already in there, 40 percent savings. So if you want to take all that back, there's not enough money that you could find in your fund balance or capital projects, unfortunately, to save a lot of jobs. It's, it's an economically unsustainable organization that we have the way we're currently staffed. And it's hard to say because I was manager here for eight years and assistant manager for 10 years before that, most likely hired probably over half the people that would be slated for layoff at one point or another. And we'll do whatever we can to avoid it, but we need to be candid as well and just indicate that if there's a better way to be more efficient, we have to take a look at that. What you're seeing and what you're reading about, we were the first ones, but I'm sure that if you read the papers, you'll see stories about Auburn Hills now having a hard time. I understand Grand Rapids is in the paper today with about 150 layoffs slated for, I think, this coming July. And you're going to read about more and more cities having the same or worse problems than we have. There's no benchmark we can follow because we are the benchmark that other cities are calling us to see what we're doing. But unfortunately, the savings that we thought we could realize for certain departments are already incorporated in the model that we had, we're still short. We then went to eliminating some departments. We then went to closing some departments that were quality of life. We did that, and we were still short over a five-year look. Then we had to go to the police department and the fire department. That was all essentially that was left.
You asked to have some indication from council on these other areas here?
It would be good to get direction in terms of some of the questions that were actually just a synopsis of what the council had spoken about at the last meeting. And you've already addressed item number two, which was asking the voters if they wish to approve a general fund millage increase. We'll come back with language as soon as we can in that regard. There was also an indication that council can authorize the use of budget stabilization fund, fund balance, and increasing some administrative fees. These go back to what I had written to you back, way back in September. And you really didn't get a chance to articulate what your thoughts on it because there was presentations beforehand and persons in the audience that had a lot of comments. So you didn't get a good look at it until probably the last meeting. And just so that you know, the budget stabilization fund has $1.8 million into it. The option that we have already bakes in $300,000 a year. So that essentially is already being used. Use of the fund balance essentially is up to you. There's $10.5 million. We were asked how it would look if we went down to 15 percent of fund balance being part of the entire general fund, what would it save? And it sounds like math magic, but because we have expenditures that exceed revenues and we estimated 2 percent increase in revenues every year, it's not going to really help any, any jobs that will be saved. It'll just delay layoffs when you look at a rolling compounded deficit over a five-year look. But again, that's, that's up to you. You do have a current policy, I think, of not utilizing your fund balance, but that's your policy. I could not include it in the model because as a governing body, you do not want to use fund balance.
Well, do we, would you want us to talk about fund balance now then? And before we go to something else, maybe we should discuss that. You asked the question, Councilwoman Belltramini, about going to 15 percent as opposed to 17. And then you have the charts here that give the answer. So someone want to weigh in on what they feel about the fund balance, using a portion or not using a portion? Councilwoman Belltramini?
I, I said in the beginning that I, I do believe we have fund balance to help us a lot, and that's part of the purpose of it. And I believe that if we are not using the fund balance that we have in part, we are not being fair to our citizens if we're asking them to pay more. That's where I am with that. I understand it doesn't buy one job, but I do not think it is fair to say to the people of Troy, "We've got money and savings that we're not going to use in case the day gets raining." So. Madam Mayor.
I don't know who's next. I can't tell. I think maybe Mayor, Mayor Tim Fleming and then we'll go this way. Okay?
Thank you, Mayor.
Everybody wants.
I agree with Councilwoman Belltramini. You know, it's not, it's not a lot of money. I think your chart shows use of the fund balance at 15 versus a 17 percent will only produce a net difference of $100,000 over five years. But that's $100,000, and I concur with you.
Yeah, I do, too. I think that, you know, we want to keep our fund balance at... I think that, you know, we want to keep our fund balance at, so we have some available. But I think that we do need to, I agree that if we're going to ask the citizens to consider the increase, even though it won't be an increase in dollars to their tax bill for the average homeowner with a decrease, as Mr. Lucari has explained over and over, I think that that demonstrates to them that, you know, we're trying to do as much as we can do. But we still have to look long-term toward the future, too. And thank goodness, we had a sizable fund balance to draw upon, you know, from, from years where things were in better condition and what councils were looking down the road at what would happen 20, 30 years from now. So I don't know who was next, if it was Councilman Slater or Councilwoman Kirwin. I think it was time.
Thank you. Well, it's just really a question of, do we need to pass a resolution regarding that? Or whether consensus would do it? So is that?
Mr. Zerley?
At this point in time, I think that, you know, we needed a resolution on the millage issue, because we had to come back to you in a very tight timeframe for you to approve language. The use of fund balance could be discussed during budget sessions that we have, just a consensus, if you will, of how you want us to take a look at certain of these things, I think, would probably suffice.
But don't we have a standing resolution now?
We do, we do.
And, and I think that was your concern?
Yes, it is. I am concerned. I would just assume change that. I don't know if this would be the appropriate time to do that, or if that should come on later at another meeting or what. But I think that a resolution would be called for, because we have one in place. So that's one issue, and maybe that'll be solved before the, as we continue. And I think it's important that we keep a responsible
Right.
fund balance. And that would be, you know, so that our audits and everything else remained in place. But I too would support 15 percent at this time, so. And would support a resolution and would urge us to pass.
And excuse my ignorance, I was not here the last, the last few years. But I thought that, and Mr. Lamorado can correct me if I'm wrong, there's a series of policies that you adopt in your, in your budget. I think that 15 percent's within that, within that range that you've already adopted. That's why I didn't see a need for a resolution, but I could be mistaken.
Okay, Mr. Lamorado?
Mayor and City Council, the direction for council for the current year's budget was not to use any fund balance nor to balance the budget. And our current year budget does not have any use of fund balance to balance this current year's budget. It would be helpful, not only in getting information out, but also in preparation of next year's budget, if there was something that we knew that is permissible to use by council, whether whatever percentage that may be, or bring it down to that percentage would be helpful. Instead of developing a budget at a certain number, no, right now, I'm still under the direction, I think, with not using any fund balance to balance the budget. It would help in discussing this matter with the residents and letting them know what the 1.9 mills plus fund balance plus whatever else may come up out here tonight in those discussions. But I think in preparation of the budget, I'd like to have a little more direction in that area there, just so we could, I would not like to include it and say, well, why did you include this? Or at that, during budget discussions, we present the budget, we like to have a lot of input from council beforehand and put it together and without any surprises there.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Slater, what's your question along that same line?
Yeah, yeah. My question, I don't know, the 15 percent, does that have any effect on our bond rating or anything? Is that, that would be my only concern. If you could answer that for me.
Knowing that this would probably be an item for discussion tonight, I did a little research in the rating agencies and so forth and what they look at. And they're kind of all over the place on it. A lot of them, there's really no set guidelines by the rating agencies for what percentage of fund balance you should have. Every city is unique by size, by your budget, by a lot of factors, your tax base and so forth, your taxing flexibility and things like that all come into play. What they do all like to see, though, is a policy on a fund balance, which we do have in our budget, which states that we should have between 10 and 17 percent of our, for unreserved, undesignated fund balance. 15 percent falls within that number. What they do like to see is to make sure that the city complies with their policy. Of course, if you have one, they want to make sure that you're compliant with that. If you don't, then you can get downgrade, or that one factor, a negative factor. What the fund balance you have to look at in our instance here is that it's a cash flow mechanism for the city. We are in interest on those funds in addition to the funds that we do have. And we always, we target at 17 percent, because we said that's two months' operations, basically, for the city's general fund. So we'd like to keep that. We said, well, we can go 10 to 70 percent, keep it in that range there if something were to happen. We just need to have that cash flow cushion there to get us by. Standard and poor's does go a little further in, in their ratios that they like to see for fund balance. To have a strong ratio for fund balance to expenditures, they're looking at an 18, 8 to 15 percent range. To have a very strong above 15 percent. A low would be, of course, zero. Adequate is 1 to 4 percent. And a good would be 4 to 8 percent, basically. That's what they list in their information when they look at those ratios of fund balance. One thing we presently do not have is, one of the major factors are tax rate, any flexibility in the tax rate. So when you don't have any flexibility, then they like to see a little more of a fund balance there, because that helps if things go up or down, or for whatever reasons during the year, if revenues don't come in, expenditures go up. They like to see that cushion there. So I think our range in the budget is fine, and we're, even at 15 percent, we're within that, within our policy that has been adopted.
I would hope that they look at reasons why you do things also, in the times that we have
Right.
and things like that. Certainly, I think, should have some, some bearing on that, I would hope. But your opinion is 15 percent's okay?
I think so. It's within our range. I think it's, it provides some funding, and we've basically said the 1.9, if you look at over the whole five years, doesn't really get us to where we need to get anyway. So it'll help us out, maybe try to get there over that five-year period.
Further just questions on that? Then we'll need a resolution to come forward in the probably, I don't know, next meeting or the next one, two. Is that?
Can we do a clarification?
Do you need a resolution tonight?
I'd say let's do it.
What, who are you looking at? Councilwoman Kirwin? Oh, you're turning around here. Yes, Mrs. Bartholomew?
If the council so desires to make a motion tonight, they will have to suspend the rules, because it is not an actual postponement.
Okay, right there.
I'd like to make a motion, that we suspend the rules?
Support.
Move by Councilman Slater, seconded by Councilwoman Kirwin, that we suspend the rules. This point to have a resolution come forward. Discussion on the suspension of the rules? The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Councilmember Howellak?
Yes.
Kirwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schelling?
Yes.
Councilwoman Beltrameen?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Motion passes. Have a resolution to bring forward?
I could. I know that Councilmember Beltrameen usually writes them pretty well off the cuff.
Oh, we could all do one.
I didn't prepare one. But I, Madam Mayor, if I might?
Yes, go ahead.
If the clerk would work up something that would be resolved, that management may appropriate fund balance for budget purposes, as long as the undesignedated, unreserved balance remains at 15 percent or more. Does that make sense? That's basically what we want, right?
Right.
And, Madam Mayor?
Yes, Councilwoman Kirwin?
Perhaps council authorizing management to would be a stronger beginning of the resolution.
Council authorizes?
Management to.
Management to
Allocate.
Allocate fund balance up to
We could table this.
Pardon?
We could table this and
So you want to write one up and then we can come back to it?
Yeah.
Because we want to have the appropriate resolution. We don't want to have it be inappropriate. Mr. Lamorado? Correct?
I think it could be, uh, Mayor City Council, I think, I could, we can draft something up real quick, but I think it could be basically that city council authorizes city administration to utilize fund balance, but not to, but to maintain at 15 percent.
Okay.
Or something along those lines.
Okay. All right. So instead of having the vote now, we're going to come back to that in a few minutes? Greg?
You actually need a motion to either table it until management comes back or to postpone until after
Okay. I'll move to table until we have an appropriate resolution, and we'll come back to it within the meeting here.
Sir.
Moved by the chair, seconded by Councilwoman Beltrameen, that we table until we have the resolution. Come back and discuss the other things that are here. Discussion, vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Councilwoman Kirwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schelling?
Yes.
Councilwoman Beltrameen?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Your Honor, do you want that resolution tonight?
Yeah.
Do you want the resolution tonight?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. May I make, take a quick stab at it?
Pardon? Yes, certainly.
Sure.
They were, we were meaning all of you together
All right, well
a combination kind of thing of
How about this? And you can modify it if you like.
Maybe we could take just a
It's a very simple resolution.
Well, you guys were
A five-minute break? Someone at the table has requested a break for
I have.
A reason, so.
All right.
Five minutes, we'll be back again.
Carol Anderson providing a report on that. Also, there has been at the Troy Community Foundation has set up a fundraising account. We do not know if there's been any funds collected to this point, but there is a fund set up for the trail system as well as a very good likelihood of what we've heard in other communities could be a 50 percent match to those funds.
Yep, but if we don't use the monies that are allocated, that we have set aside for.
Well, we'd have to use that to match. We need our funds to match with those other grant funds.
There's someone else? Councilman Fleming, I thought I heard you say something like, yes.
Thank you.
Mayor Portem Fleming.
Thank you, Mayor. Looking at this, the trail system was $2 million, capital fund for the civic center was 1.1 million, and that's just the money we've got allocated in our capital budget. We don't know if we're going to get matching funds or not. There's potential for that, is what I'm hearing. The question I think before the council and Mr. Zerlag's letter is, are we ready to cancel these projects and allocate the funding to another possible capital? And I'm thinking, I can't think of anything better than roads. We need $5 million a year in roads. The question I think before the council tonight for serious consideration is, do we take the $2 million in the trail system and the 1.1 million in the civic center? We don't know if we're going to get matching funds or not, but do we make a decision now to give you direction to allocate that to the road budget, keeping the capital budget, but the roads, not to the trails and the civic center? I think that's $3.1 billion. I think that's what you're looking for, some direction like that. Am I correct?
That's correct. In my letter, I indicate that council has a choice of taking these quality of life projects and doing one of three things with them. You can keep them where they are to see if we can use them to leverage funds for grants. You can take the funding and allocate it toward the road improvement projects that there's a need for, but not allocation of funding for. Or you could transfer it to general operating as a one-time fix.
Councilman Slater and then Councilman Kerr.
If we move the money to roads, we wouldn't do those projects before February, would we?
That's correct.
So in February, we're going to know a lot of, we're going to have some answers to a lot of questions in February. I think we should wait till February, in my opinion, to do anything with that money and leave it where it is.
And we can still move it because in the budget discussions, which will occur in March.
March.
Councilman Kerr.
Mayor Portem Fleming framed a question, and really, I look at it as a policy issue. It's a current practice that council has had, really, on the ability to leverage additional dollars. It's a policy issue. So on things where we have that ability to still leverage, rather than saying, well, we need money for roads and here's money available, let's pour it in there. If we have that ability to leverage funds, I would always opt to do that. That's been a practice here. The question I have, and I would do that with the trail system, it's a good partnership, public-private, and the ability of some other funds coming in, and certainly transit. I know from attending a number of SEMCOG meetings that the federal government is looking for three things. And that is a collaboration between communities, which we have, regionalism, which that has, and ready-to-go, which we are. Those three things, removing any of them, will not only jeopardize that center for now, but also for funds going forward. So on either of those, my question is, the 1.1 million for the civic center, Madam Mayor for the city manager, is there anything in that that includes the ability to leverage additional dollars?
I think there may be, but I'm not certain. Again, I'm not familiar with what's been going on in the past several years with this.
Well, then that's the only thing, just speaking for myself, because that wouldn't fall into the ability to leverage additional dollars. If that's so, then I would look at that. If not, on the other two, I would certainly see, and certainly looking at what's coming forward in December and February with the Tiger Grant, all of that is, will be there during our upcoming budget sessions. So I guess if you were looking direction one at a time or as a body, I would be inclined to hold off on those. And I don't know whether Mrs. Smith.
Oh, did you want, you want an answer about the civic center? Is there managing funds? Does Mrs. Anderson know?
Thank you. There are some recreation amenities in the plan, sledding hill, that may or may not be, well, would be eligible, whether it would ultimately be successful in getting a grant is hard to say, although the DNR grants are not, that's not the direction that they necessarily are going in. There's fountains, there's additional amenities, benches, that kind of thing on the walking trail. The hedge maze, not eligible for anything that I would, can think of off the top of my head. The, you know, if we do do some kind of outdoor theater, amphitheater, some arts or arts funding may be available, but that, those are very, very limited funds at this point.
Well, as much as I, I know we had a civic center task force committee that looked at things, and I know that people were looking to the future and all that, but frankly, I don't see us in the next five years doing things with civic center improvements unless things change drastically with monies. I don't see that happening either. As far as trails or the transit center, I think that the answers to some of the monies that are coming in for those are going to come very shortly. And if they don't, if the answers don't come soon enough, then we'll just have to make a decision. But I think maybe getting that information will give us a better handle on what we should do there. I don't know how the others, I'd like to hear how others would feel on that, too.
Mayor?
Councilman Harrell.
I guess one thing that would help, too, is I think at this point in time, there's a certain amount of uncertainty as far as what leveraging of external funds there is. The other item that I think is important to keep in mind is the original appropriation dates, because most of these, if not all of them, have been rolled forward from years past. I don't think there've been any actual new or incremental appropriations since, I'm not sure, but if we could get a history on that, so we can see. I think that the trails funds might have actually been whittled down from the state of last year. So, you know, the whole governmental accounting thing is a little bit misleading to some folks, but these are simply just carrying money forward that we've had to piggyback, so to say. I don't think it would surprise anybody at this table to hear me say that I'm opposed to the transit center project, and I'm not going to argue those points because we've done that and it would simply be delaying the process. So my position on that is unchanged. I'm not in favor of spending the money, federal, state, doesn't matter whose. The other two items, I would like us to wait until we have a better idea of where or how we are going to proceed, or if we can, with external funds. But just a general concept, I think we're getting by the bare minimum on capital projects. I think one of my major concerns is the quality of the infrastructure of this city. The 1.9 million we talked about earlier, it's my understanding that at least initially the majority of that, if not all of it, is an operational issue. And I have great concern about the capital issue of the city, because we can continue to offer the services, but if the city falls apart, there's a certain major element that is very unattractive. So I do want to, I do believe that we need to be very focused on maintaining what we already have. And if it does mean sacrificing some new projects, I mean, I would hate to delay the civic center development anymore, but if it's a matter of that, we're letting the city go to seed, then I think we need to make that sacrifice. And I would say that with all three of these items mentioned here. And finally, if we can just get a better idea of where we are with trail funds, I know we mentioned 50 percent matching, is that on the entire $2 million?
Carol.
At this point, because we don't have a plan that is adapted or approved, it is, there is, like you suggest, some uncertainty. The plan in its form right now, which is just prior to coming to you for approval, has everything from shared use paths, complete streets, bike lanes on roads. Those things that are shared paths are the most likely, and elements that contribute to complete street are the most likely to be funded or have some matched grants. Those things like bike lanes are less likely from, at least the DNR, from the Michigan Department of Natural Resources. The MDOT funding, I am much less familiar with and what they are at this point approving for funds and matching funds, grants, that kind of thing. But the elements of the plan are diverse, and those where they are shared use and complete streets are more likely to be funded.
And just a follow-up to that, I think the other thing to remember is that, you know, there's a certain incremental cost, and I'm guessing if we're going to do some sort of road project and add it on, that the incremental cost is not going to be terribly that great.
Very true. Part of the plan also calls for those parts of the project or the plan that are, where roads are going to be rebuilt or redone or renovated, whatever, the paths are, or bike lanes are to be put in at the time that those construction projects are done. So the cost is much less and more efficient.
Further discussion on this one? Councilman Beltrami?
I am unprepared at this point to move any of these funds anywhere else. I believe that we will have a real sense at budget time whether or not these funds are still matchable. And if at that time they aren't, I think we can move these projects. But it's my sense, and much like Councilman Harrell, this is capital money. If we were going to use it, I'd want to use it for roads anyway, and so it's not going to make any difference to the general fund. So I think we can afford to see if they leverage us anything, and if they haven't by March, then maybe we do away with some of their part of it.
Is that, Mr. Zerlag, can I give you some more information?
That's an absolutely clear direction. Thank you.
When you hear all of us kind of in the back of the call. Okay. Are there any more items on this we need to talk about tonight?
No.
Because we do have that rest of this agenda to do, and I know we'll come back to this, because I know we're not done. All right. Okay. But we did make headway.
You all did a very good job.
We made big headway, so we should be patting ourselves on the back here. Okay. Next, we come to regular business. Merrill appointments, none scheduled. We do have the liquor advisory committee person, the student Lauren Harden.
Move the resolution.
Support.
Moved by Councilwoman Kerr, seconded by Councilwoman Harrell, that we approve the appointment of Lauren Harden, student for a term expiring 7/1/2010. Discussion? To the liquor advisory committee. The vote? Mrs. Bartholomew?
Councilwoman Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilwoman Beltrami?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Harrell?
Yes.
Kerrwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion passes. On the Merrill nominations, we have the LVFA Councilman, and now Mayor Portem, Wayne Fleming was on, and Councilwoman Brumfeld was on. And I'd like to have council members let me know if they're interested in either continuing on that or serving on that as an alternate. So I'm not going to bring forward any news tonight until I have a chance to talk to my colleagues about that, because, you know, different people have different schedules. Okay, city council nominations, I don't know if anybody contacted anyone with regard to those items, or if council, several of them are council-owned, so. Councilwoman Kerrwin?
Madam Mayor, I wonder if we might postpone this until the next meeting. I know that we have the new council members who haven't had an opportunity to look at the full resume, so if that's all right, then I would move to postpone this item until the next time.
Just take no action.
Take no action.
We don't have to postpone, we just take no action, is that right?
That is correct.
Okay.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Councilwoman Beltrami?
Before we move on, I think it's important for the public to know that we do not have as many volunteers as we need for either the advisory committee for persons with disabilities or the historic district study commission committee. So if anyone would like to serve on any of those boards, I would encourage you to put an application in with the city clerk.
Mayor?
Councilman Harrell?
Just one thing, I was wondering if maybe we could put in nomination, these three reappointments to the Troy Days Committee. I can't imagine it's going to invoke much dissent, and their terms expire on November 30th, and since we have the two-step process, I wanted to make sure that they don't miss a beat.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Councilwoman Harrell?
Is it not true that they serve until replaced?
Right.
Yeah, so.
I don't know if they even have a meeting schedule this month.
Yes, good.
Okay. All right. That'll give everybody a chance to look at all those, look at the information, perhaps there's some new people who council members know that, you know, they want to volunteer. We had a lot of this agenda, so I don't know if anybody had a chance to ask these people either. Okay, E3 is the proposed Troy City ordinance, City Code Ordinance Amendment, Chapter 103, Alarm Ordinance, and Chapter 60, Fees and Bonds Required, and Chapter 88, Nuisances. Do we have a resolution?
Madam Mayor, could I ask that maybe moved separately, please?
Move to separate.
If they're moved that way, you don't have to move separately.
Right, okay. You want to move them separately? Do we have to have a resolution, or can we just do them separately?
We can do them separately.
Okay, all right. We'll do them separately then. Okay, first one is Alarm Ordinance. Someone want to move the resolution?
Mayor?
Yes?
I'd move the resolution as written.
Support.
Moved by Councilwoman Slater, seconded by Councilwoman McGinnis, that we approve the resolution as printed. The Alarm Ordinance, discussion? Mrs. Bartholomew?
Mayor Schilling?
Yes?
Councilwoman Beltrami?
No.
Fleming?
No.
Harrell?
No.
Kerrwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Motion passes. Chapter 60, Fees and Bonds. Someone want to move the resolution?
Madam Mayor?
Councilwoman Beltrami?
I would resolve the Troy City Council hereby adopts an ordinance amendment to Chapter 60, fees and bonds required of the Troy City Code as recommended by city management, a copy of which shall be attached to the original minutes of this meeting.
Board.
Moved by Councilwoman Beltrami, seconded by Councilwoman Fleming, that we approve the resolution as printed in red. Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Councilwoman Beltrami?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Harrell?
Yes.
Kerrwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes. Motion passes. Amendment to Chapter 88, Nuisances. Someone want to move the resolution?
Madam Mayor?
Councilwoman Kerrwin?
It resolve that Troy City Council hereby adopts an ordinance amendment to Chapter 88, Nuisances of the Troy City Code as recommended by city management, a copy of which shall be attached to the original minutes of the meeting.
Support.
Moved by Councilwoman Kerrwin, seconded by Councilwoman McGinnis, that we approve the resolution as printed in red. Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Harrell?
Yes.
Kerrwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilwoman Beltrami?
No.
Motion passes. Bid waiver printing of election and voter registration materials?
Madam Mayor?
Councilwoman Beltrami?
Whereas Printing Systems Incorporated provides election-related supplies and printed materials that comply with the state of Michigan standards, whereas Printing Systems Incorporated has provided the city of Troy with required materials as a result of the lowest quote and regularly as the only vendor able to provide the materials requested in the quotes. And whereas Printing Systems Incorporated holds the contract for ballot printing and supply kits with Oakland County, and it is desirable to utilize Printing Systems Incorporated for ballot folding and specialized forms in conjunction with the county procurement, therefore, be it resolved that the Troy City Council hereby waives formal bidding procedures and authorizes the purchase of printing of election and voter registration materials from Printing Systems Incorporated at an estimated cost of $40,000 per fiscal year through December 31st, 2012.
Support.
Moved by Councilwoman Beltrami, seconded by Councilwoman Kerrwin, that we approve the resolution as printed in red. Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Councilwoman Harrell?
Yes.
Kerrwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilwoman Beltrami?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Motion passes. E5, winter maintenance agreement with Road Commission for Oakland County, I'll move the resolution.
Support.
Moved by the chair, seconded by Councilwoman Kerrwin, that we approve the resolution as printed. I would like to, discussion, I'd like to make a comment with regard to this. I think this is a good thing for us to do for our citizens of business. However, I think that folks should know that we do not receive back complete payment of what the costs are to do this, that there still is monies that come from our city budget to do county roads, and yet it still is a better deal than having the county plow them. And given their latest information that was in the paper about Oakland County Road Commission and how they're going to be doing less this year, and we know that our DPW does a much better job, more efficiently, more quickly, and at a cheaper cost. So we are getting a better deal, but we don't get complete payment back, and I've always thought we should get the complete amount back from the county, so I just wanted to bring that up one more time.
Madam Mayor?
Councilwoman Kerrwin?
It was interesting in reading the background material, which is available on the website, that the commission considers their road priorities, I-75 and M-59, which we wouldn't really consider roads or county roads. This abdication again of the county roads and dumping them on the municipalities, and thank heavens we make safety of our citizens a priority, because it truly is. It's not only a safety issue, but it is an economic issue that people are able to get out, get to work, and move safely through our community. So I'm glad that we continue it, but again, holler at Road Commission citizens, because I think that this is a true issue, where things continue to be dumped on municipalities, where literally the rubber meets the road. Or the snow.
Well, again, as we talk about what we're going to do with privatization, consolidation, et cetera, et cetera, there are certain things that are so important, and certain people that do those jobs so well, that I think that that always should be taken into consideration. And I know this is a lot being said about when signing the agreement here, but as I read through that again and thought, oh, they don't even pay us back, we still, what was it, $100,000 that we're still, from our money?
Right, it's about $100,000 a year. On top of that, salt's going up about 40% this year.
Forty, yes.
And we wanted to just highlight to the governing body and to the residents that for this level of service, it does cost money. If you let the county roads be under the purview of the Road Commission, it would essentially be when they got around to it, is when they'd be plowed. We have a 24-hour protocol, you know, on the contrary.
Councilwoman Kerrwin?
I know there'll be something on the item later, but I do want to echo, the mayor on our own DPW knows the roads, knows what to avoid. We've heard recently from citizens who've come forward and talked about what an advantage that is to someone who knows where that mailbox is, or where the grass goes over, and applaud the people who've maintained our roads for so long and the fine work that DPW does.
Further discussion on this item? Mrs. Bartholomew, the vote?
Councilmember Kerrwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilwoman Beltrami?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Harrell?
Yes.
Motion passes. On the consent agenda, we could have a resolution to approve all of the items that are F items unless council members wants to exempt any. Mayor Portem Fleming?
Yeah, F4C.
F4C, okay. Any others, council? Would you like to?
Yeah, father.
Councilwoman Beltrami?
I would move the consent agenda, excepting F4C, which will happen afterwards, and this also includes the amended minutes.
Support.
Moved by Councilwoman Beltrami, seconded by Councilwoman Kerrwin, that we approve with this vote, all of the F items, with the exception of F4C, which will come right after this. Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Councilwoman McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilwoman Beltrami?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Harrell?
Yes.
Kerrwin?
Yes.
Motion passes. Mayor Portem Fleming, you wanted to talk about F4C?
Yes, just noting here that we're spending from the Community Development Block Grant Program, $54,000 for playground equipment. And I understand, you know, the need for that, and I'm just wondering if this money, if we could reallocate this money as it's a Community Development Block Grant to something that's not playground equipment. I know that you have to spend this money in a certain manner, but maybe we could delay this and next year use it for the home chore project or something of that nature, where it would be a more direct benefit to our residents.
I can answer that briefly. This funding for that budget year cannot be used for home chore. It has to be used by the end of this calendar year, which is the fiscal year for Community Development Block Grant, and we have looked at all the other programs, when we paved gravel roads, do all the different surfaces that are available that we can spend that money for, we're down to the end of the wire, and we have the last two years put funding toward the paths and park at Section 36 Park and the parking lot over there. This is another portion of that money that, there's no other place that we can put that toward, and we're down to that timeline, and this is where Carol and her staff have designated those funds to pay for equipment to expand that park, because we already have the paths in there and the parking lot for people to assemble at that facility.
And there's no playground equipment there, is the point? This is the park that people waited for, for years and years and years, to get a park in their neighborhood? Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. And this funding can only be used in Section 36, because it's the only section in the city that, due to the low income of the residents that live there, it can be blanketly used for projects. there, it can be blanketly used for projects.
Does that?
Yeah, okay. Thank you so much for that clarification. You can understand why I'm asking the question, I think. And I hope everyone listening, watching this can, because we're not going to find a solution to this budget crisis, you know, a million dollars at a time. We're going to find it $50,000, $5,000 at a time in many cases. But with that explanation, I would move the resolution as, as printed. Thank you.
Moved by Councilwoman Fleming, seconded by Councilwoman Beltrami, that we approve the resolution as printed. Discussion? Further discussion? Councilwoman Kerwin?
I would encourage it for the newer council members or for returning, if you have not been over to that section, Section 36, I would encourage you to go over and walk. I know if you were doing door-to-doors, some of us have done there before. I mean, it is really shocking. And, and some residents say, are we not a part of Troy also? And they are. And so, to me, this is a, a long-promised amenity for, for this section of town. And so, I look forward to seeing kids having something to do at the end of that trail, a place to climb, a place to play. Thank you.
Further discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Councilwoman Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilwoman Beltrami?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Harrell?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion passes. Council referrals, council comments. I want to comment about Wednesday. Wednesday is Veterans Day, and this Wednesday is the 11th, and at the 11th hour, the 11th day, the 11th month, we always have the Veterans Day Ceremony here at the Veterans Plaza in front. And I encourage any and all that can come, if their work schedule permits, to come to that. It's always a very nice ceremony, only lasts an hour at, at the most. And so, I just want to mention it because certainly our veterans deserve our respect and honor each year. And I know that not everybody can come to that because of, of work schedules or other plans that they have, but I wanted to mention it. Any other council comments? Councilwoman Beltrami?
I, I know that Mary mentioned it earlier, but I did bring the handbook
Right.
for the ethics on Michigan municipalities because I, I find it helpful, and I think that it's good background if we do go and talk about a code of conduct or an ethics standard or any of that. And it gives some insight into the law that surrounds that. The city attorney had a little bit to do with it.
Quite a bit. Okay, any other council comments? Councilwoman Fleming? Uh, Council... Mayor Protem Fleming, did you want to make any comments?
No.
No? Okay. Councilwoman Slater and Councilwoman Kerwin?
Mayor, as a rookie, I'm not sure what the process is. Do we discuss at this point if we want to say something about a J item?
Yes, you can bring up a, a J item.
As long as Carol's still here, I, I was going through the J items and I, I couldn't help but pull this letter commending Frank and Don at Sillam Glen Golf Course for what they did. I don't know if there is some, something that we can do to, to get them on a, some kind of award or something, but it seems like they went way out of their way to, to help a disabled man and his son play golf. And golf is a passion of mine, and so I, I just wanted to tell, tell them thanks for what they did. And maybe we could do a little more for them with something.
I will certainly pass that sentiment on, and the fact that it was noticed by you certainly will go a long way as well. And I have addressed it with them prior to tonight's meeting. Certainly, we would hope that all of our staff would act in a similar manner in, in everything that we do. And sometimes it's more difficult to do that than other times, but certainly this was one time where we were able to accomplish something pretty special, I think. So, thank you for that.
Any other items? Councilwoman Kerwin?
Just going to express my congratulations to Mayor Protem Fleming. And I'm heartened to learn that training's on its way. I know that past president of MML has passed on information about orientation, just $10 orientation for our new council members. And I believe there's an interest in that. And then also, training, we can at the end of, not too long, at the end of February, have all members trained, which is a really great place to start the new year. So, I'm really looking forward to that. I sit on the Elected Officials Academy for MML. Prior to myself, Dave Lambert sat on that committee, and really works hard to develop a good curriculum for elected members. And I'm just very happy to, to learn that you'll all be taking us.
Any other council comments? Okay, then we are in agenda, 1103.